Eight o'clock, let's stand for the pledge. Thank you gentlemen. Girl call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Here.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, are there any additions or corrections?
I have none.
I have none.
Additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Item three, public comment. Is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments for a Isabella County related to material management planning proposal. Come on up gentlemen. Good morning, thank you for making the show.
My name is Jake Borden. I'm the director for the recycling facility in the county's DPA. And this is, I'll let Tim introduce himself.
You can be part of the community development, I'm losing my voice today for some reason. Community Development Director for Isabella County. A pleasure of working under Administrator Dolan here for a number of years. Been with the county since nineteen ninety-four. And Jake is the expert in this. I've just been helping him, assisting in and working through building partners within the other counties to be supportive with this MMP planning process.
All right. Basically, what Isabella County is offering is just kind of give you some background history. And we've done a feasibility study on our facility. And that feasibility study is giving indication that with some modifications to the facility, we could switch to a single stream and increase the amount of material that we are able to process. At this point, we've garnered a nine hundred thousand dollar grant from Eagle for infrastructure and finishing up paperwork with the tribe on Saginaw Indian Tribe for one point five million in equipment purchase funding for this whole project. So we've established an ad hoc committee to work towards this whole rebuild for our facility. But the state has been nice enough to mandate switching from a solid waste plan to a material management plan. Every county in the state has to work towards a material management plan. That plan process, there is sixty thousand dollars available for that to be able to accomplish this task. There's an additional ten thousand dollars for every county if you do a collaborative effort on working towards that particular process. There's also fifty cents per capita that is is available. That fifty cents per capita is available for the first three years. And that funding will then diminish after that three-year period. What Isabella County is offering is opportunity to be able to collaborate on the material management planning. What we're, what we are proposing to do is the seventy thousand dollars would be put into a hold fund to be able to accomplish or hire a material management planning firm to be able to write that plan. The fifty cents per capita would be pushed back to every county to be able to work on education and infrastructure because them are key parts of the material management planning process that has to be accomplished in each county. So that would, that would allow money back to each county to be able to work with in that process. And then the material management planning process would, there, there's also would be a seat from say Ogumah County. If you choose to do so, Ogumah County would have somebody that is on the material management planning committee that would also have a say in how that seventy thousand dollars is spent. So that way, everybody has a say in what amount of money they have at the table. It's a.
So let me jump in really quick Jake. So, so this pool of money as we, as we would all partner together, each community would partner that we partner with, we each get that, that funding allocated to them. What we're proposing is to put all that into one pot, write our plan with it, our joint plan that would accommodate and meet state requirements. So it would all be in compliance. And then the monies that would be left over would stay in that pot of money, which would then be managed by this board or committee that would be established amongst all of the partners. So that we'd be putting money into certain, certain streams of material that we do need. Because the difference between a solid waste management plan and a material management planning process is, is the material management process that's mandated by the state now. We have to account for, every county has to account for every piece of material that's coming through. So whether it's construction material, we have to, we have to design and develop where that's going to go. Whether it's household hazardous waste, whether it's just your normal household items, your cardboard plastics and tins and stuff. So we have to have plans for all, where all of that goes, which is different from what the solid waste management plan was. So the state's still dumping some of this down on us, which is why we're, we've been at it for a little over a year. But with what they've dumped down to us so far, what was it, January eighth, they kicked this thing to us. So you know, January eighth, they kicked it to us and it's, it's come pretty quick at us. They don't know at the state really what, what they're doing there yet. They're still trying to get some of that stuff shook out, but we've been ahead of the game for about a year and we're trying to stay out in front of it, just build these partners. So, so as Jake said, some of that funding will go right to plan, some of it will stay in this kitty so that we could design and develop exactly where that money is going to get spent within. And then that per cap dollars for the first three years that's kicked back from the state to you, it'll be kicked back to each one of the communities, each one of the counties would go towards educating towards what our goals were. Where, where are we putting these materials? Where are these materials going to go? And we each counties getting some revenue out of it to utilize towards that educational activity to their, to their citizens and their citizenry.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Wiltie.
So right now with this collaboration, do you guys have any other counties on board?
We do. I have two signed contracts as of right now. I would expect by the end of the day today that I will have Macosta County on board as well. We have Osceola County and Gladwin County. We have signed letters of intent from them at this point.
We do. Grashit as well, probably, right?
And Grashit has indicated that they are going to move that through their commissioners and they will be getting it. So we, I would expect by mid February to have five counties with letters, letters of intent from five counties.
This isn't going to cost us anything. There's, if I'm understanding this correctly, there's money allocated for this if we do join, correct?
Right. If you don't join, there's money allocated to you as well. If you do it yourself, but then you have to write your own plan and you have a strategy for how you're going to get rid of that waste. We have a facility currently, which is why we've decided to go out with this feasibility study to say, who around us who doesn't have a facility would be willing to partner with us so that we could bring more materials into Isabella County and you could fulfill your plans without having this overall general impact on you having to create a facility.
So a couple of questions. So mobilization wise of the materials from Ogumah County to your facility, is that all part of this plan? Can I figure out how transportation costs would be and everything? And then you guys are the fiduciary of all this?
We're not, not for all, but we would be for that seventy thousand, yes. That sixty or the fifty cents per capita, we would not fiduciary. That, that would be automatically pushed back to each individual county.
Right. Because you're asking for that seventy thousand to go back to you guys for this study and.
Yes, that's to be able to, to be able to write the plan and all of that.
And we realize, we realize that, you know, if we have only five counties in, and each one of those counties has seventy thousand dollars, we're going to have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in this pool. We realize it's not going to cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have this plan created, this partner plan created. It's going to be more than just an individual county would have, but it's not going to hit that three fifty. Whatever is left, a customer's two hundred thousand, write that plan. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a kitty. That's that money that's still going to sit there. That's going to be then decided amongst the partners and how and where that's going to be spent so that you still have a say so in the money that was coming your way. You're just partnered with us in it, with us and whoever else in it.
Commissioner Scott.
When the money runs out and you're still in business and you still want us to partner with you, what's going to pay the bill?
The revenue generation out of the material inbound is what will cover that cost.
The inbound stuff, not the outbound.
Well, the outbound is, is your commodity sales.
Yeah.
Okay. You're in, so the inbound material and increasing inbound material will, will drive that sales dollar up on the outbound material. So you're going to, you're going to have more material that's available to sell is basically where it's at.
Isabella County is not looking to partner with anybody because it's going to benefit just us.
Right.
If we, if you don't partner with us, you have to follow state law. You have to do these things yourself.
Right.
Or, you know, and so there's a difficulty there in, in, in quantifying what that cost is going to be to you guys or what that cost is going to be within this group. We just know that the feasibility study that was done, we looked at surrounding counties within the mid Michigan area to see who has facilities, who doesn't have facilities, what kind of material, what kind of industry do you have there that we could drive materials through the facility to make sure that the facility can grow and continue to provide that revenue source to, to fulfill this.
I think the the artery we set on is for transportation is I-75 and US twenty-three. And you guys are the first ones to come to us. Okay. I don't know if somebody's, if we're going to look at a consortium from say Alpena South.
Sure.
You know, along the, along the shore.
A little more difficult to get here. A little more difficult for that transportation line, the logistics of transportation.
To get to.
Pleasant. No, no, no. It's easy to the east side of the state drain down twenty-three and seventy-five and go say south to Saginaw.
Gotcha.
Where you have a couple of facilities in Saginaw.
There's them facilities have diminished capacity. And I don't believe that you're going to see increases in, in that.
Well, isn't the maced already a single stream?
It is in, in Saginaw area.
Yeah, and I don't know.
A lot of that's being transported.
Who's doing the authority in Saginaw now?
It's still the middle Michigan.
It's a, it's another contractor.
Authority.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that eventually what the vision is for Isabella County is, is that you know, pursuant to all partners is, is that it would become an authority. Okay. That whole thing would end up as an authority to be able to.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to say I want to reject it. Maybe, maybe we're too early right now.
You have, and I'm, I'm just.
Because we would be on the outer circle of your counties.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
We're out there. I mean, you didn't even name Claire yet and that's your, your, your northern neighbor.
Yeah, we just haven't got, we haven't got to Claire yet. We're, we're pretty confident.
Drove through to get here.
Yeah. I know how long it takes to get here.
You had Gladwin and Osceola and I see Macosta and then to the south Grashit.
We, we just haven't had the chance to, to get that meeting set.
Yeah.
You know, I know the administrators, they're well, I'm confident that Claire.
Midland, does it have a facility?
We're in conversation with them as well. And no, they do not have.
They don't.
They have, I shouldn't say they don't have a facility. They have a very, very small facility at the landfill right there. It's the city landfill, so.
Well, there's still flow control. Their county is still trash flow control to their own landfill. So that, that creates issues with transportation and things like that. You know, and I, I, I don't know what's going to happen to the north. We got flow control counties to the north up here, Alpena, Mount Rancy and Oscoda are flow controlled to Mount Rancy and that may be an issue too. But then again, they would drive right near us to get they'll probably drive right through us to get to, to go facilities out, you know, unless they were to go over Traverse City, I think American had that, had that single stream. Now it's GFL now. Are they operating in?
Yes.
Calcasco or is it Travers?
It is at, at the old American facility there.
Calcasco, okay.
I have a question.
Tim, did you have anything to add to this?
I just, a couple of things just for clarification. Now, I think Commissioner Wiltie was talking about deadlines. I understand we've got to make a decision as a county from something like July second or something like that.
January eighth started the clock. You have a hundred and eighty days to, as a, at a board, as the Board of Commissioners, you have a hundred and eighty days from January eighth to send a letter of intent from the CAA, which is the County Authorizing Agency. And that's where, whether you're setting up a material management plan or however, if you choose not to do that, that can be passed on to a municipal. Say the city of West Branch, you as a county didn't want to, you don't want to partake or, or do the material management plan. The city of West Branch could do that, or if you have a waste authority, they can do that. The thing of it is, is that you're still going to be the fiduciary of the money. You're just not going to have control of it if somebody else does. Okay. If say the city of West Branch done that. So that's one of the things that, yes, from January eighth, you have a hundred and eighty days to be able to become the CAA. Which is an unauthorized designated planning agent, all of that. So.
Just so you know, we've not officially been notified of anything yet. We're getting, I'm on the email list for all the trainings, but I've gotten nothing from Eagle or anybody in the state level saying this is your commitment and, or anything saw. We had some recent experience using some of the IT infrastructure at the state that has not gone well. So we may just not be on their radar. We have one program, we found out we weren't committed in our system, which that's because we've been doing the program for decades. But anyway, we've talked about, you mentioned sixty thousand, ten thousand incentives for multi-county approaches. Is that a one time or is that one of those three-year programs that are going to?
I think the language that is used in that, Tim, is that and it's a three-year period or until funds are depleted. But I think the sixty thousand is a one-time.
Okay.
The sixty, and it's a one-time deal. The fifty cents per capita is until that money is depleted.
And just for reports information, I've done the math, that's a little over ten thousand a year that would come out there per capita to Ogumah County. Okay. And if, what, what is your deadline? So you're here today, you'd like to have a letter of intent. We understand the January, the July eighth deadline with the state. But do you have a deadline that's earlier than that where you need commitments?
I don't. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know that we've established a deadline yet. We just have, we know that we've got to hit that, that January, that July date as well. So I don't think we've put ourselves in a deadline because we know we're trying to get to ten, eleven, you know, counties here and make sure that we can make this work. So I don't know that we've set one yet. So we're more than willing to hang out and wait, we, you know, see if there's other opportunity for you guys that makes more sense. That, that's not an issue for us. But I think once we get sitting down and been to all the counties, we're going to probably sit down and then start establishing like, okay, we've talked to everybody now. We've got so-and-so thinking about it. We've got these ones in, these ones out. Now we have to set ourselves a date.
Is there a minimum number of counties you need to participate?
Nope.
What are we currently doing?
Going to do it well.
There has to be for this materials management.
I'm shocked that.
We just don't have a plan?
Selves has not been notified because our, the, the notification to Isabella County come not just to our administrator, but also to the chairman of the Board of Commission.
Like I said, we seem to have fallen off the map somehow with the state. And I mean that seriously. We learned that yesterday that everyone you had in a system. And so I, I don't know what IT magic may be going on in there, but that might be part of a bigger problem.
Sure.
Did you have something?
Yeah, but how? Like we got garbage trucks, pick it up. How, how is it going to go from, you're going to go to the transportations? We're going to truck it to you? How's that going to work? How's that going to change?
And that's all part of the plan process. That's, that's something that could be determined through that planning process. So everybody would have a say on how that develops.
We have to know, sorry to jump in. We have to know our partners to know what logistically is going to make the most economic sense for us to be able to move these trucks around and move this material from one facility to the other. Isabella County currently, you know, doesn't have like composting, you know, facility. Part of our plan, we have to develop and design one. One of these counties may have a great composting, you know, great composting activity going on in their community. And we've got to then strategize within our plan, how we get our compost and our materials moved to them. So there's a lot of moving parts with it. We realize this is really early, but that plan is what's going to help us. Which is why we did a feasibility study a year ago, knowing that the state's coming down with this stuff so that we could be kind of out in front of this to make it ourselves moving. Are we able to grow our facility and make partners? Or are we just sort of big enough that we can only operate within? So there's a lot of unknowns about those kind of exact details at this point. But those are things the plan is going to definitely spell out for us.
And once you're going up, up and running, it's supposed to be, it's going to pay for itself.
It's going to take a little bit of time. Because obviously right now we're running about four thousand tons a year. The projection on the feasibility study is within a five-year period if we could get to around twenty-five thousand tons a year. And at that point.
But you're talking about selling it and, and recouping so it does not come off.
Right.
But who's that going to help? The, the garbage companies or the people?
It's, well, it's going to be a service to everybody. So it's like anything county-based, it, it's a service to your constituents. Again, the state's going to mandate you do it. So your citizens have this sort of mandate all on them that this has got to be done. It's either we partner together and we find a way to do it at the cheapest cost we can find a way to do it, or you do it yourselves. That's the cheapest way you, you find to do it.
Commissioner Wiltie, did you have something else?
I just got a couple of things. Obviously, this isn't in our wheelhouse for, for many of us. Commissioner Scott, you could probably tell the way he's talking, this flow control and all this stuff. I have no idea what he's talking about. But I guess my biggest concern is I understand you guys are trying to get up to eleven counties and eventually start a, you'd have almost like an authority. So you'd have a board. So if we got to that point, I mean, we as Ogumah County would have a representative to be able to be there and to see all the, my biggest concern is for this feasibility study is this is really new for, for us. I mean, we don't have a lot of recycling sadly still here in two thousand twenty-four. You know, how, how are they going to really be able to get real strong numbers to say, okay, Ogumah County is going to be able to supply roughly this? You know, you know, Crawford County, if they come on board and at Crawford, you already have some of these counties. It just concerns me of how we're going to be able to get these numbers because for you guys, it all come matters what comes into the plant because then what comes out is where the money comes in. And if we don't hit those numbers, then all of a sudden we're getting asked, okay, Ogumah County, we need X amount of dollars from you guys in order to keep this going. And now we're fully committed to you guys. And it just kind of makes me concerned that this is really kind of a new area. So I, I'm concerned that the it'd be hard to really find out to really do a true good study.
I think our feasibility study, Jake knows it better than I do, but I believe our feasibility study used demographic information and census data. So we know what type of industry you have here. We know what types of, of materials comes out of those industries. So we're able to interpolate numbers to be able to give us the good ideas of that. So we're not just throwing, you know, a dart at the wall saying you guys are going to produce, you know, a hundred thousand tons a year and that's what you're going to produce. We've taken your population and all that stuff into account when the numbers went together within the feasibility study. So we feel pretty comfortable, I think, with the numbers that have come out of the feasibility study. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. We'd be right back in Isabella County.
You guys can't mandate what we would contribute.
No.
Material wise.
No.
No. The handwriting's on the wall. It sounds like the, the state's going to come along. Yeah, they're going to come along and they're going to say you're going to X amount of material. It's going to get recycled, you know?
And also with part of this plan, the one thing you have to understand is, is that the state's going to tell us how much you're going to have to do. There has to be a digital footprint for advertising, for recycling, composting, household hazardous waste collection, you know, all of these things. There, you have, you will have to have, every county will have to have some kind of a digital footprint to be able to make sure that all your constituents are, at least have access to being able to see where they can take material.
Right.
And I think that's the big thing too, is you know, so many constituents have never recycled. So who are going to buy into this? I mean, I can go, I can throw this away, pick it up and recycle. You know, such a process.
Well, that's, that's a long ways from that.
Yeah.
Because right now we're talking just plan.
A plan, we have to.
What I'm saying is while you're familiar with Sag, or Midland. Midland, you cannot put trash can out in front of your house without putting a recycle bin next to it.
Right.
You can have only recycling, but you cannot have only trash. You have to have a recycling with it. And that's mandated by the city.
Yeah.
They did that so that people would force them to recycle. The handwriting's on the wall. The state's going to, the next thing, probably five to 10 years from now, they're going to send a letter out and you're going to send material.
Yeah, that's it, the MMP plan. Yeah, that's what the change at the state level is, is now they're just forcing, we want no more of this material in landfill. State fades out at the state.
There's the solid waste plan where now we are in a solid waste plan right now. It was, it was drawn up when Granholm was in what is that, the early nineties?
Yeah.
You know, when salt, when, when composting became, came out of the landfill. You know, she, she mandated that you couldn't take
Long waste.
Long waste to the landfill or recyclable cans. You, you know, it is illegal to take a recyclable can to a landfill. It's illegal for you to throw it in a trash can. Really, it is.
Right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
It has been since the nineties.
Yeah, you know, and I'll be honest.
Don't worry, there's nobody out there to clamp down on you.
Isabella County's last update on our solid waste plan was in two thousand two.
Yeah.
So, so everybody has forgotten about it. You know, when you start getting north far enough, you know, in, in Isabella County is about that cut line. I've been in the industry long.
US ten.
I know that, you, you know, US ten, US, or M twenty is about the cut line. And when you start going north of that, you know, the, the amount of recycling, it just, it's like falling off a cliff.
Well, like I said earlier, if, if there's another group that wants to do this, it'll probably come from Bay County and Bay County will look up seventy-five and twenty-three. Okay.
So. Bay County has no intention of doing anything other than their own. And I've already talked to Midland.
Yeah, and I would guess that. But I would ask, I would ask Tim if he made one phone call down there to Bay County, if they said that. And I don't have any problem going with this at all.
Are we the furthest county north?
I think at this point, yes.
Yeah.
At one point, we have talked with Ross Common. And I need to get back with him to find out whether Joey still has interest or not. So.
Okay.
And there's going to be, please understand that every consulting firm out there knows that the state's going to pay sixty thousand dollars to every county. So what they're going to come in, if you chose to do it yourself, they're going to come in with a proposal that's going to be sixty thousand dollars.
Fifty-nine, nine, nine.
I mean, they, they really are because
Yeah.
I, a lot of, a lot of the people that I know in the industry are like, yeah, well, we're going to write solid waste plans now or material management plans. Yeah. Yeah, because.
Well, the real smart ones are going to come in at sixty-five and just get squeezed another five out of them.
You know, and so that's the other thing that's happening. Everybody is, you know, everybody knows the amount of money that's on the table. And, and it's not like it's a lot of money, but you start looking at combining counties. The intention for us is, we're not, it's not a money grab.
I think this is a great idea with, with all these areas that, that need to collaborate on numerous different. I think we're all struggling, struggling financially. All surrounding counties collaborating on, on different things to help save everybody money.
And the big thing for us is, is that the surrounding counties, you know, I mean, we understand we have a recycling facility. Osceola County has Morgan Compost. You know, so there's outlets for us. And, and I, you know, I mean, we're not necessarily picking counties trying to cherry pick, but we understand that every county would have, whether they realize it or not, would have something to offer to this. And which makes for a better partnership for all of us.
Right. We can do this for sixty, sixty thousand dollars. How old's your feasibility study?
Nine, yeah. Did we do it in two thousand nineteen, I think is when it was done. Or two thousand.
By RRS.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-three.
It was after.
January twenty-three. Says me by RRS, January twenty-three.
There you go.
Year ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can see like I've had it in front of me longer than that, but.
Thanks guys. Any other questions for these guys before we let them go? Thanks for the information.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've already contributed to this already. I, because you got tribal money. I've been down there. I already contributed.
They appreciate that.
Yeah, they do. You guys will.
Commissioner Wiltie, did you have?
I mean, I appreciate you guys being here. I think these mandates are just more, you know, big government mandating us, us counties and eventually it's just going to cost us money. Then we're eventually going to be to a point where we're going to have to have a recycling law enforcement officer. I mean, it's just, I appreciate what you guys are doing, but it really puts us in bad positions. Yeah, we need to keep our, go green and keep clean, but there's some tough times right now and, but collaboration is important. We need collaboration. So, thank you.
Hundred percent. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Item B, inmate healthcare proposal. Nine AM, so do you want me to go forward?
Actually, representatives from both of the presenting vendors are on Zoom right now. So if you wanted to proceed, unless they had objection to starting before nine o'clock, I think it would be very appropriate to move forward.
First, we have TMD correctional services. Uh, first, we have T M D Correctional Services.
Uh, Jim Demond, and I'm here on behalf of T M D.
You've got the floor.
I, we presented a proposal. Let me back up one step. I had anticipated that uh the head of T M D, Tina, uh would have been here to make a present, to join in this presentation. Unfortunately, on Tuesday, she's had some medical problems, and right now, at this moment, she's in the hospital. I expect that she'll be released soon, but she's still there, so that presents prevents us from being with you today personally. Uh, I presented a proposal that basically mirrors what we have been doing for the past now two and a half years, and there's not much that has changed in all that time. Uh, and the uh, I I'm gonna open it up to questions. If you have some things that are particular uh concerned for you, I'll try and address them.
Tim?
Jim, you had, um, we were here, oh, just a few months ago, we had issues with the uh malpractice insurance. Could you talk a little bit about how you've addressed that in your proposal?
I have been with the uh folks that are actually uh providing us with the insurance policy. Uh, there was a monumental increase since we took over uh from correct care back in twenty twenty-one. Uh, so it took a real jump this past year. I have been with them, and um the part in our proposal that deals with the malpractice insurance, um, we believe will hold us through the next uh cycle of the contract. Um, you had asked for, I think, uh insurance, malpractice insurance on a claims made policy. Um, the um Excuse me just a minute, I'll, I wanna find something I'm looking for. Okay, you had asked for an occurrence uh policy. Occurrence policies in this particular industry, the correctional medical is not available. Uh, we have a claims made, uh but we have a start date for it that goes back to October of twenty twenty-one. Uh, so anything that happens today will be covered. Anything that has happened through the lifetime of our contract with the county is covered. Uh, and uh we have made our best guess uh based on uh projections offered by the uh insurance providers as to what that uh policy may wind up at. Uh, and that's a fairly high number. I do not anticipate even today that it's that big a number. Uh, what I would propose is that we will review the the premiums uh each year. And right now, going into the next year, uh I anticipate that the cost is not going to be that which we have in our proposal. I would adjust it downward. It's not our intention to make money off this. We just need to get the insurance paid.
To build on that, um, item G, duration, it says not to exceed three percent a year. And even talks about malpractice insurance would be contained within that three percent.
Well, I don't think that's what.
No, it's not.
Page six. Bottom of page six.
I I'm looking at it. It's there.
Okay, and that's, that's meant to be the cost of living increases. Uh, that's why I separated out the insurance. And it it uh will be billed at what we are being charged.
Oh, it says, yeah, billed separately, so we'll, we could be right back into that same thing we were just a few months ago.
I don't, I don't think so. I think that we've got adequate uh flexibility in there to cover it. This, this market is, is terrible. I mean, there's not, not much that we can do about it. I don't have any control over it. And um we take what we can get. That's where we're at. The projection, we did, we did not anticipate when we started this contract back in twenty-one that uh we would have the malpractice insurance increases that we have experienced.
So I guess the per, per year, it's gonna depend on what your malpractice does, along with an increase, is cost of living as well?
The cost of living, uh those two things are not uh related.
Correct.
The insurance is what it is, the cost of living. Um, we had one, one year here, what was it, last year? Or it was under ten percent. I'm not anticipating if there's gonna be any kind, anything like that. Looks like the uh rate of inflation has settled down, and you know, we will be uh uh we'll just absorb whatever goes above three percent.
We have additional staffing now. You have additional staffing now?
I'm sorry.
Are you providing additional staffing now?
Give me the hours?
Uh, yeah.
No, they went from sixty to forty.
Right, and we have staffing for that.
They're forty hours.
And there's only the one person then.
That's correct. Well, I mean, if it's more than one person, we're still providing uh forty hours. There have been times where we've had uh staff of two, and they they each take a share of the forty hours. We've, we've stuck within that.
Okay. Page eleven says the cost of addition, above additional staffing, twenty hours per week. For a total of sixty hours per week, the previous contract. Uh, let's see.
It says that they reduce to forty.
We started at six, uh, we started initially, uh, it's on the proposition that it was gonna be forty hours, but very quickly uh this board uh accepted the suggestion that we go to sixty hours. So we had been doing that. And until you hit your uh, your deficit, and we then cut back to the forty hours, and that's what we're providing today. If we, if you choose to go back to sixty hours, we'll have staffing available to do that.
I think that's what that's saying. If we choose to go back, then the compensation's gonna go up.
Okay.
That's the forty-one thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. Is advanced medical healthcare?
Dr. Melissa Caldwell.
On as well? Hi, I think you're muted still.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, good morning.
We have a a fairly extensive team. Um, we also should have uh individuals in attendance. Um, Stephanie Powell, um, her assistant DMO, and and Logan, um, Ruble, um, are they present?
They are not.
No, they are, aren't they?
Oh, they're on.
C two.
Three.
C three.
They're on Zoom.
C three more.
I don't believe they're actually on the Zoom.
They, they, only one is unmuted.
See, I see Jonathan, Anna, and Matt, they are members of our team.
That's on the left.
Okay, go ahead.
So Anna's gonna take the lead.
Good morning. Um, I believe we have folks that may be waiting out. Um, i- if you check that we're in attendance personally. Um, I know Stephanie's on her way with and I apologize, I I thought that we had that a nine o'clock timeframe, so she may be running just a tad late.
No, you, you are in the nine o'clock uh timeframe, but we are ahead of schedule at this time. Did you, would you like us to wait till nine, or would you like us, because we we have other things?
We're happy to start, but I I wonder if they might be outside, uh because uh based on the timing in which Logan was supposed to arrive, he he should be there. But we will do whatever is convenient for you, and we we can certainly speak to their components when they do arrive. So we want, we want this to be um uh accommodating to whatever your schedule is. You you're, you're making time for us.
Well, we definitely have other things on our agenda, so we can, we can move forward and 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 circle back if you'd like.
Sure, let's do that. Yep.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Um, item five, discussion items, five A millage proposals. We have the headly first.
You've got a, on your iPads, a draft of a resolution that probably lands on your uh agenda on Thursday next week, and I say probably because we do have to uh conduct the tax limitation committee meeting this afternoon at three thirty, and that's the committee that recommends this moving forward or not. I do want to point out toward the bottom of the first page of the resolution. Uh, while we break out the millages, in this particular statute, and the way this uh works is that it's not only the county impacted, but also the townships and the intermediate school district, thereby explaining why those uh groups have to be represented on the committee that meets this afternoon. The tax limitation was actually set by a vote in nineteen sixty-five. Yes, we're talking about fifty-nine years ago. And the county has been, uh, as every other municipality in the state, subject to the various rollbacks uh on Headley and limitations on proposal A. What this proposal would do is just to reset that, reset everybody, or everybody's the the counties, the township, and the uh ISD millages to what they were uh intended with the vote in nineteen sixty-five. Now, Randy's here. I don't know if you wanna add any of that history or not.
Randy, you wanna come on up?
Sure.
Because we may have a few questions for you. Good morning. Do you have anything to add to that?
Just Tim had looked up the original from Michigan Municipal League, had a listing of the millages when they, when they had the election nineteen sixty-five, so the county was at, I believe, seven point two mills. Uh, the townships were each at one mill, and then there was point three mills for ISD. Yeah, since we've talked about since Headley impacted in seventy-seven or seventy-eight, it's been rolled back to where the county millage now is six point zero nine three one.
Six point zero?
Yep.
So the override would add about one point one mills back to the county.
Anything else for Andy, guys? Anything else on this, Tim?
Uh, this and the, and the next one, we talked about the animal shelter have both been through legal, and so this is their um recommended language as well. Uh, we just had to make sure that we plugged in our local numbers correctly, believe we have.
Did you have something?
Yeah, when this first come in, what was, what was a mill?
What was a mill? As far as the value for the entire county?
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to, because I did, I never looked back to nineteen sixty-five. Everything I looked, I went back to nineteen ninety-four and came forward, so I don't have any idea what the, what the value was in nineteen sixty-five.
I think my dad's house was like, I mean, it's about fifty years, one time.
Yeah, I I don't doubt that. I mean, it was I think county equalization departments, when they were done about the same time, they they'd never even had equals fire to about sixty-five, sixty-six. So the whole tax structure was different.
What's, what's the value now? County wide?
Uh, the tax value is just over a billion dollars.
Yeah. I happen to know what it was in ninety-four, since you said ninety-four.
Yeah.
I didn't bring that with me, so I do.
Karen's got it. Karen might have it. Just curious what twenty-five years ago, or thirty years ago, would have been? Because I know, I think, since I've been here, it just got over a mil, a billion. Yeah, it was below a billion before.
It was uh above a billion prior to two thousand and ten, and then when uh the economy crashed, the cost of housing went down.
Okay.
And it dropped. When I started in twenty seventeen, it was not, it's been eight or nine hundred million. And it's gone up each year. The last year was five percent. We're, the last two years, we've been over a billion dollars taxing.
Okay. I would suspect back in nineteen sixty-five, there, there was a whole lot less, a whole, whole lot. I mean, that was pre I seventy-five, everything.
So I guess, are you looking at us to today with this?
This is just information for you today. Um, the action happens at the three-thirty meeting this afternoon, and it's the committee there uh recommends bringing it forward. It'll be on the agenda, probably in this format on Thursday next week.
Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Back when that was, they voted them in, it wa, it was a whole lot less money than it is now.
Absolutely. A whole lot less. You could buy a house for ten thousand and two instead of a hundred and fifty.
I did. My first house was ten thousand.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sevens, do you have something? Commissioner Scott?
No, this is just a step in the, in this uh process for rollback.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
I'm good. Thanks, Randy, for coming up.
Thank you. Animal Shelter Services?
You want to see my zone, it's a little different. This doesn't have an extra committee to go through, so you can move forward for next week. Uh, this is the two tenths of a mill uh for animal uh shelter services. And uh two uh tenths of a mill would bring in, we're estimating uh two hundred six thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars, sixty cents. This, as with previous, has been through legal, so it is, we're confident that the language is consistent with what we're required to have.
And this is, what's the expiration on this millage? See it on there?
Six years.
Six years, okay. Wow.
Question.
Okay.
Um, this, this just goes to the county, then at that point, we decide where it goes. This, well, wait a minute, it's Brendan, it's not written.
Okay, go ahead.
Nobody's written here.
Okay.
That's one of, that's my point, is there's nothing in this resolution that says where it goes, except here.
So the process would be, should it pass, is that you would issue an RFP, provide these services. And we would distribute that to all the known shelters, obviously in the county. We would literally direct uh mail or direct email the RFP. Those proposals would come back to you, and you would select who you believe is the one that would best serve the county's interests.
So should that verbiage be different? Because?
No, um, because you're not deciding today that this is going to go to a specific uh vendor, if you will. Now, in reality, are there other options? Probably not. I mean, I'm not aware of any, at least not at the level that we would need the service. Uh, but you are not obligated to send these millage dollars to a specific location. You choose what that location is, and you choose it based on uh, you know, RFP process and a contract that you would agree to uh that would go to that vendor.
But we had a specific animal, the animal shelter came here, they did have a legwork for this, they.
They are handling the service for us now, and that's the fifty dollar per dog contract that we did um about a year ago, whatever that was. Uh, and as far as I know, they are the only game in town. There's, there's no other option. Somebody knows of anything different. I don't.
Well, uh, Brendan, are you still in paws and claws? No? Oh, are they in existence?
They are not, they are not an animal shelter.
Oh, okay, all right.
So what services, uh, funding and services, is there any other in the, you you're active in this? Is there any other services in Ogma County?
No, that I'm not, I am not aware of. That's the only animal shelter that takes care of animals. Now, Claws and Paws, they bring in animals to adopt them out. That's for sole purpose. Pretty much.
So how do they get their funding?
By selling dogs. They go to different places to get dogs, and then they sell them.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there any other, there's no other facilities in Ogma County? What was the one that was in downtown West Branch?
That was Claws and Paws.
Okay, Commissioner Wiltsey?
I would just think as a constituent of the county voting yes or no on this, if I voted yes, I'd rather the county, us be the fiduciary so we can make sure it's, you know, it's controlled. Maybe there's only one animal shelter. But things can change in a year. If something would happen, and you know, we're the ones that can control yes or no, and I think that, you know, as a constituent voting for that, I think that's important, rather than going directly to a private entity that can make profit.
I, and I see the other side of that. There's other people that are going to vote directly for this. I, and I see the other side of that. There's other people that are going to vote directly for this private entity. And they're the ones that did all the legwork on this. I mean, I. Go ahead, Commissioner Sevens.
My understanding that the, they might would be allocated to. The one high animal shelter or brave family animal shelter. The only one here. Now you requested this, so they could stay open because the prices of taking in county animals is much higher than what we're getting. And they're going broke. Now, if you decide, you know, they have to pay their people, they have to maintain the building. They have to provide food, they have to do all these things, the medications and stuff. And if you decide the county commissioner says, well, they don't really need that, don't give them the money, then they're done. I, I think, I think the money needs to go directly to the animal shelter. And there should be an agreement and it shouldn't be, I don't think it should be us deciding. Uh, because we don't know what goes on at the animal shelter.
Randy, did you have something?
Yeah, the reason private entities can't levy a millage, they only have to levy a millage and that's why you would have a service contract. Presumably since they're the only game in town, that's who you're going to have a contract with. But as Commissioner Wiltsey said, they could pull two years from now and you may have to have somebody else that you would deal with. But that's why the county is a fiduciary. The county can levy a millage, a private entity cannot.
I understand that, but part of this millage language could also state directed towards that.
I don't know, probably not. I say the comment.
Okay, I. Did you have anything else, Randy, to add to that?
I mean, you can't say you're going to go, you, you're doing it for the services for the animal services. You don't have a county shelter to. Pay for a department. So to levy the tax, that's why you're going to contract out for the services.
Okay. Commissioner Wiltsey?
I just think it's a good example of, you know, each one of our millages, there needs to be an education piece. And I mean, I think it's pretty clear. I mean, there's no other players in the game here. I think it's clear, our commitment to the shelter. We've been very clear about that. We've continued to support them. And it's just kind of like Randy said, it's part of the process. They're a private entity, therefore they cannot have their name on the millage.
It's also a five-year commitment. A lot of things can change in five years. So we just, my concern is that we need to make sure that if things do change, that we're still okay. Commissioner Sevens?
What do you mean by five years?
Two, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. Six years, sorry.
Six years.
Yes. That's, a lot of things can change in six years.
Of course, but it could burn down.
I would, I would like if we can invite these people so they know before we make the vote, they understand that it's not going, we're not. The taxpayers' check isn't going directly to their place. So they understand that this is. This.
Absolutely.
You know, because in six years, you're talking about two different commissions, admissions. The next one's for four and the next one's for.
In the conversations that I've had with them from the first day they walked in the office, I've made it very clear, we cannot put you in the millage vote plot. I think in, you know, a lot has transpired since then. So let's, it's perfectly, I think, legitimate to make sure everybody understands. This is written in a certain way, but we will, obviously if it passes, I mean, there will be a contract. We will lay out what those services are and so forth. And as far as the length of it goes, I expect the contract will probably mirror something pretty similar to the millage. But there'll be language in there like we have in any other contract. If something happens and that business is no longer viable, there will be a way to get out of the contract. Both, for, for both sides of it. But yeah, you might recall, I can't remember if it was the EMS millage or the nine-one-one millage that we did. Very similar approach was taken to the language, the prior language specifically named either the nine-one-one authority or Oglema EMS. Again, I can't remember which one it was. But when the attorneys looked at it, it was made more generic when it was put on the ballot. It just said, this is for emergency dispatch. It didn't say it's guaranteed to go to the nine-one-one authority. Things could change, so you don't want to do that. But you do obviously allocate that for that purpose. They're the only, I mean, you're not going to get too many competitors for nine-one-one. But nevertheless, if something came up, let's say if halfway through the millage, there were. Three or four counties got together and said, we could do this more efficiently with one dispatch center. You don't want to be locked in to a millage that says it's going to go here because here doesn't exist anymore. And then you suddenly lost your ability to even allocate the millage. This way you've got all the bases covered. If something else happens, if a new, in this case, a new animal shelter is built and. You know, the current facility decides, well, we're not going to compete with that. You've got an option. You've got an help.
I, I agree with Commissioner Scott. I think it's vital for them to be present because they're the ones that's going to be promoting this millage. And when constituents ask questions, they need to make sure that they're providing accurate answers. Did you have something, Paul?
I'm just going to reiterate that I've communicated the same information that Tim was telling to the great nonprofit group and they understand the process. And the fact that it would be the county that's controlling fiduciary and contracted with them, that they were chosen. So I just wanted to reinforce that I communicated that same message and they are aware.
Commissioner Sevens?
Does that mean that they, they send us up to closed budget?
If you require that or through your contract, yes. And certainly though, what we want to do from the end of the county side is that we expect for these dollars, these services to be provided and we list them. You're taking in this many dogs, you're providing medical care, whatever that might be. We just make sure that that's in that contract and then we know what's being covered. And that gives you the transparency issue as well. Anybody can look at that contract and say, this is what the millage is getting me.
I have a question for Tim.
Go ahead.
So with that being said, would this be almost like a draw then? Kind of like you have a construction draw, you get so much done and then we, you get the money? I mean, we're not just going to give them a lump sum money, right?
Well, it depends on what we ask for in terms of services. If we want unlimited, let's just say we want animal control to see every stray dog within shelter. We're going to want to say that's in there and that's not something that's necessarily going to be, you know, every couple of months, based on the number of dogs. You might want to do quarterly payments, you might want to do annual. That we can talk about when the time comes. We, we do it any number of ways. Some of our vendors need monthly, some of them, you know, twice a year is fine. We'll work that out in the contract.
So. Let's say you have the animal shelter there and let's say the furnace goes up for this millage cover paint for that repair.
It, it is written in a way that anything that has to do with operations for that shelter would be covered. So that, obviously again, it's something that if you did not want to do that, you would explicitly state that in the contract. Or maybe if you do want to specifically make sure that it's understood that repairs like that are eligible expenses, we write it in the contract that way and just make sure it's covered.
And their, their. Their plans on this is to do this for six years and then they will have an endowment fund, just like other things, they have an endowment fund. So that millage would probably go away and the endowment fund would maintain. The, the animal shelter, which is as good as thinking ahead. So this is not, millions that will probably go on forever and ever. Just the six years. I really want to make sure that it's not just the caring of the animals, it's maintaining the whole, of the whole entity of the animal shelter. They need someone, I don't know who, just donated. Over fourteen thousand dollars to pay for a new heating. Boiler for that animal shelter. And whoever wouldn't have donated that, they could be closed down right now. That's the part that I'm getting. So if something goes wrong with the facility itself, you have to be able to get it repaired. And that individual, whoever it was, wouldn't have done that. I don't know what would have happened. So that's, that's the only thing I, I don't want, you know, for the care of the animals, you have to have heat. That be covered in the contract because if it was just the care of the animals per se, this medication and this animal. There's more to it than just for the animals, taking care of the facility where the animals are also. And it's also to help. For salaries also. I mean, the salaries aren't new.
Commissioner Scott? Did you have something?
No, no, I'm done.
Commissioner Wiltsey? Anything else? My concern is yes, that that should definitely be directed towards the animal shelter. And I guess I just want clarification since the, the county is obviously in financial strain. That we have the animal control individual that. These monies do go towards that and not so much to supplement areas that we can find holes in our, like with animal control. Say, say his salary, say. Anything in that aspect. Does that, do you understand that people are going to be voting for this animal shelter? We need to make sure that we're very clear of what these fundings are going for, if they're going to vote for this. Not us trying to supplement other ways that we can, we can supplement his services, that individual's services to supplement our budget.
Right.
I think this is written in a way that we would have to go through some horrendous acrobatics to get to there, you know, to where we would. Cover those funds. You know, the language, particularly the title where it talks about animal control, shelter services, is that animal control component. That gets the county involved. We, we have obviously the authority to do animal control work in the county. But part of that is sheltering those animals after, you know, just a stray or whatever they're picked up. Some counties have their own animal shelters. We do not, nor do I recommend we go down that path. This is in our case, fortunately, a private, probably nonprofit organization in the county that does that. So this opens up the opportunity and this is why the language is written the way it is. Where they have already provided the sanitary, humane and efficient animal shelter services. That's the box we're putting ourselves in. This isn't to go out and patrol for stray dogs. This is for those sheltering services and where we can make that tie back to the infrastructure of the building. That's where we get into the efficiency. It's not very efficient to not have a heated shelter. In fact, I don't think you could be open. I'm not sure you'd be licensed. So it's, it's intended to be a broad umbrella to cover those things, but I think where there's adequate protections that a board. Five years from now can interpret this to say, oh, we can fund our animal control officer with this. It's not what it says. This is specific, the shelter services.
Or his needs.
Right.
Out in the field.
Right.
Okay.
Or a paper and a vehicle.
That's his needs out in the field, anything in that aspect, right? All right. Now I think we're, I think we are, the individuals we're rating on are here. We can go back to advanced medical healthcare. Do you guys want to come on up? Thanks for making the trip. Yeah, sure. Come on up. You got the hot seat.
Come on up.
She pointed, she knows where she's coming.
She was pointing at the other guy.
Where'd you guys come from?
Um, McCall.
Oh, okay.
Genesee for me. We, your other people are right up there on Zoom.
They are, they are.
We'd already spoke with them, but they were saying, because we were ahead of the game. We waited for you.
Oh, no.
We are too.
You guys are fine.
No team member left behind, right? Right. You guys have the floor when you're ready.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Good.
Good.
Oh. Um, I'm Anna Franklin. I am a program consultant for advanced correctional healthcare. And I, I'm here to try and help walk you through our response, our RFP. We have several members here and I think, are, are we sharing screen now? Can you all see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Stephanie Vandermerch, are you doing that now? Are you running that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't sure here, so can switch off some, so there I was. Thanks so much. Okay, so we are at advanced correctional healthcare and we're here to try and go through this RFP for you. And kind of tell you a little bit about our company and what we do. And we'll just take a few minutes to introduce everybody. Stephanie, if you'll click please. Before, this is who we are. We have been in business for approximately twenty years. It started out with Dr. Johnson. He is still with us as the chairman of the board. He is a doctor that started this because he saw the need for providing medical care to the underserved communities in a jail. He was a jail doctor. And so we have grown that business and we have over three hundred and seventy-five jails now. We do only jails. We are the largest jail provider in the United States, but we also are a small jail provider. We have jails that range from five inmates to about fifteen hundred to two thousand inmates now. So the majority of our jails are small to mid-sized jails. We serve a large number of jails in Michigan as well, and we have twenty-two states now that we're in. I like to tell folks, I'm a retired sheriff in Alabama, and I like to tell folks that ACH is kind of like the sheriff's office or the county. You can still get in touch with Dr. Johnson, with Jessica Young, our president and CEO. Everybody has everybody's phone number and everybody kind of relies on relationships building. And we are here because, as you'll see in a few minutes, the majority of folks that work for and with ACH are corrections and law enforcement backgrounds. And we understand the problems that the counties have, both with funding budgets, liability issues. And helping sheriffs and jailers try and run their jails in a constitutionally sound manner. While trying to understand fiduciary importance of staying within your budget. So that's important for us. And having worked in that arena for a long time, we understand how that works. Go ahead. As you can see, and you'll hear from several of us today, we have in your region, these are the years of experience that we have in jail, in corrections. And with medical in jail and corrections. So you've got a lot of experience space to go on and everybody in this group that is part of the base of this experience is available. And on call to you twenty-four seven. We also understand that jails don't stop for holidays, jails don't stop in the middle of the night. We've all been on call throughout our careers, our whole life, and are still on call. So you're able to reach out to us at any time you need anything. That includes our doctors and our mental health professionals as well. So one of the things that I think is important about ACH, when I, when I retired from the sheriff. They came to me and wanted to talk to me about coming and helping other sheriffs with medical. And something that was important to me was making sure that when I was able to connect with other counties and other sheriffs and JAs. That I was representing a company that had integrity and that's important. And I found that this company does do the right thing. They're in it for the right reasons. And that was important to me and all of our colleagues to make sure that when I say something or when we, we try to help you with something. You will see what we are based on and it's all based on tenants of this company. That's how we run this business. So you'll see some of that in your package. You can go through that. Go ahead, Steph. People over profits. Right now you're going to hear a lot of. Media issues with medical providers, jail issues, lots of, lots of changes going on in our industry. As the former person spoke earlier about that this is a really big changes and a hard industry to, to be in. He's right about that. There's been a lot of changes and a lot of demands put on counties and jails. The good thing about ACH is that we, although we're a big company, we still run that with individual-based medical services. So that your constitutional bar is met. And one of the things that is important is that we don't have formulation, we don't have a set rule for each thing that happens. Each patient is taken care of just like they would on the outside. Because if you remember, the constitutional bar is that the patients inside your jail facility get equal to or above. The care that is, that is available. the um care that is that is available on the outside. Now, we know that they don't get that care on the outside, that's why they come to us in a jail setting and they are um in in a bad way and we have to try and help them. But the constitutional bar is that they get equal to or above. So a lot of the larger companies and a lot of the reasons for a lot of the lawsuits that you will see is because they have not done that individualized care of each patient. And so that is part of what our practice is, is to make sure that each patient is cared for individually. And our medical team will talk to you a little bit more about that in depth and how we actually do that practice. So right now, ACH is like an umbrella of a lot of divisions of different companies, so we can provide you a lot of services that you may not get elsewhere. Um we manage USA Medical, which is our physicians, um Spark Training, which you will hear um some about in just a little bit, we have a um a great training um provider that is that is part of ACH that you get for free. So everything of all the new changes that you're gonna hear, um the the, anything that comes online that is um in- individual to your state is going to be added to the Spark Training Log that's available online and we have NC Training as well. Then we have electronic medical records, that is something that is coming. We've offered a um, we've offered a separate pricing for you to look at in your RFP response. If you should choose to go with electronic medical and then we have a um mental health division as well and Dr. Caldwell will speak to that as well. So there's a lot of services under our umbrella, all in company, a lot, we're all worked together. Um but it's divisionalized so that e- each person in each part can can have expertise in each division. And at the table right now, Stephanie, if you'll introduce yourself and I believe Melanie is online. Um USA Medical, this is gonna be your medical partnership and Stephanie, if you'll introduce yourself and tell a little about yourself and then let um bridge that with Melanie, please.
Will do. I'm I'm Stephanie Powell, I'm Director of Medical Operations and by my friend, I am the resident nurse. And I've actually got into the field of of corrections because I was raised in a home with seven brothers and five being some form of deputy sheriff or under sheriff in the state of Michigan. And growing up as a child, I heard a lot of those stories and obviously I said I didn't wanna do anything with that and I went to the hospitals for seventeen years and I listened to their stories. By happenstance, I got into corrections about eleven years ago and I haven't looked back. Um I think uh as Anna mentioned, I think the dynamics of our company that many of us have that that custody background, right? And so we can balance the medical along with the needs of the county, the sheriff's department and have a thorough understanding of what's going on, so I'm Stephanie.
I'm Melanie Stroda, um I'm our clinical education director for advanced correctional healthcare. I've been a site medical practitioner for ten years with ACH. Come come from a little farther south from y'all in Kansas, but have uh cared for patients in in over thirty-five jails in the ten years that I've worked with ACH um as a nurse practitioner. So one of the things I'm very proud to do as part of ACH is to be part of our education support for our practitioner services team and I represent them here today. Um one of the things I'm proud about with the way we do things is um as Anna kinda told you before, we do individualize our patient care, we have an on-call provider that's available twenty-four seven to our clients to make sure that we can um attend to patient needs no matter what the time of day it is. And that also includes a course on-person um onsite services and having that individualized care that's provided in your house to make sure that you have a primary care provider who's caring for your patient needs as a whole.
Thanks so much. Um Stephanie, if you can kinda talk about a little bit of the differences with ACH in terms of actual care and how we staff? And can you let them know kind of this line? In doubt means, yeah.
Absolutely, so um one that's really passionate, there's a passionate point for me is that old E's versus our N's staffing. Um our company made a very difficult decision um because of the nuclear uh verdicts out there um that's attacking healthcare, specifically corrections, and that is because out there, the lawsuits are based on licensure, um under under-licensed and certifi- certifications that don't measure up to our ends. And so what happened is our our CEO decided, you know what, it's gonna be tough, we're gonna take a a financial hit on this, but we're gonna give our clients the best that we can give them. And so we went to a ninety-five percent, we're still in the process, ninety-five percent RN ratio. So what happens is when we bring our team in there, it actually protects the jails from these nuclear verdicts because we can go to a courtroom and a table and say that we hire the best. So that one is uh something that's very uh dear to me. Our prescribers are available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Um again, something that is really huge to me because within ten minutes, you can get a get a response back from a provider. I know, because guess what? If you call a provider and for some reason uh Dr. Joe is in the shower and you miss him, I am the next Paul in there. And I have a connection uh right up here on the screen, Melanie Stroda. I pick up the phone and that order, that per- that prescription is done in real time, so there is no delay in care. Um supportive policy and procedure. Uh this one is another one that I think is huge because no two jails run the same, I know it would like to think so, but they don't. Counties are different and as a result of that, we create and help uh with policy development based on the facility because the facility owns the policies, right? And so we uh curtail them to the needs of the jail while meeting the needs of medical. Um and then healthcare staffing spec- specific to your jail. Again, um you know, looking at the needs of the jail, how many nurses do you need? Uh how many hours does your provider, it's based off of your patient population, um the histories um of your patients and it's also based off of the community. And so we take all of the all of that data into uh account when we come to the table with a staffing plan or proposal. Um but we also take the feedback of our clients um in what they need and sort of work it out um for you all.
Stephanie, if I can add on that, um I I think we've also seen clients who are particularly concerned about the changes in nursing, correct? And they have nurses that they're particularly bonded to and have done a wonderful job for them, but oh, they happen to be an LPN. Our our company's really invested in providing historically um scholarships and other encouragements to help our LPNs who are talented and devoted to bridge to RN so that they can stay and serve the jails.
Absolutely, thank you.
One of the other things that we offer for you, and Melanie, you can kinda explain each one of those and quickly for them if you can, is that there's a lot of support services that we have. So we understand that sending out everybody for specialized um uh something that they need is not able to be done all the time, we know the the security issues and risk. So we have a lot of support services that come in and come in with the jail um via internet, so um Steph, um Melanie, if you can kinda explain which each one of these are and how that benefits the jail.
Certainly, so um certainly with the interpreter services that we can access, um those for any language you might encounter when we have those communication barriers to make sure we're gathering the appropriate information about your detainees and being able to provide them appropriate care. Our in-call, e-consult service that we have available to our practitioners um is is really a, I think, a very valuable tool for our clients because we can um be able to put patient information in and get a recommendation from a specialist in, not necessarily take care of everything, but certainly a number of specialty concerns and issues that not only negate the necess- necessity of you transporting that patient out of your facility, but the fact that we can get that information so quickly there. We can put a consult in, usually have a specialty information back in twenty-four hours at a maximum and usually it's about four to six hours. Um just invaluable sometimes, especially for some more rare specialties that you might take six months to find somebody to be able to see that patient for. And then our telemedicine options do, and again, to being able, not being only at twenty-four seven, three sixty-five call. You got access to a practitioner, even sometimes if there might be a need, if there's a need to connect beyond those scheduled onsite visits that we might be able to go ahead and utilize some even maybe video telemedicine options if there's a necessity to maybe encounter and and solve a problem. And that's really what our goals are, to make sure that we're solving problems for you and taking care of the patients in the right way.
MAT programming, this is huge now and and I came from a time when the jail said absolutely no narcotics in the jail, security risk. Um we're not gonna move to to do those kinda things and we've seen um through recent lawsuits and court decisions that we can't withhold medication from patients in jails anymore, ADA is pretty specific on that. So we are leading the charge i- in MAT programming, which is medically assisted treatment for withdrawals and opioid addictions and other addiction substance abuse issues. And we have many jails now that are moving in the direction of MAT, we have um different programming uh options for you and our team is well-trained um in in helping with starting your MAT program, starting a continuity program, how you're gonna do that and making sure that we partner with the community services that you have available on the outside. Um this is a huge deal for recidivism and making sure that we're trying to keep those folks from coming back in your jail. Um the biggest thing we wanna make sure that happens is that we prevent unnecessary deaths from um withdrawal. And Dr. Caldwell, you can kinda touch on the wholeness of the MAT program and why this is so important now.
It it's absolutely a partnership, we will work with your facility, we'll work with your community because it really is about your community um and about doing the right thing and really about saving lives. Unfortunately, um a huge tragedy of the opioid epidemic is individuals who've been properly detoxed and are clean now getting released into your community, but unfortunately the addiction is still there and they they leave, they use, they die. Um so we we wanna save lives and 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 avoid those kinda tragic outcomes for your communities to help people to have a a life worth being sober for. So we will partner with your community and make sure that people um are de- detoxed properly, so we're not having suicides, we're not having medical complications that lead to death or injury. Um we'll look at appropriate continuity of care and we will connect with your community resources so that individuals who would benefit from a more comprehensive um uh addiction recovery plan have that service so that hopefully they never come back into your jail again.
And again, we understand security risk and we understand um the the needs of the jail to make sure that this is done adequately, appropriately and securely. Um and that's from the amount of time that we've all had in jails and we can help make that work and still have you constitutionally sound. Um compliance support, Stephanie Vandermerch is our compliance director and she can talk, I know y'all are not accredited, but the ability to have accreditation, um information, education, support leads down to all of our jails to make sure that they are constitutionally sound, so Stephanie can kinda talk a little bit about our compliance.
I'd love to, uh good morning, everyone, nice to be here with you today. Um so as Anna mentioned, we recognize that you don't hold a formal accreditation, however, we we recognize in this industry that a lot of what drives the work that you do is the, you know, the litigation and the case law and things that are coming out of your state specifically and so we are currently in the process of deep diving, um you know, high level, I'm I'm relatively new to this role in compliance, I previously previously spent four years as the Director of Training for Spark. Um so we're deep diving all of the current statutes, making sure that um the our current clients are up to speed with what they need to know and we look forward to those continued partnerships. If at any point in time in the future you decide that you would like to pursue a particular certification or accreditation, we are here to partner with you, we wanna make sure that we can help you be successful in those endeavors. Um we recognize the value of that and we wanna make sure that um we are there to support you every step of the way.
If I can add to this, um we have wonderful partnerships and um Stephanie's team um are access the experts in the field. We do expert witness, for example, work sadly when there's usually litigation, um often in the cases of deaths in our in our industry. And um having training is so critical, one of the first things that happen if you have a bad outcome is plaintiff's attorney may pull training records to find out if you equipped your officers with the the needed training, if your healthcare team is trained, if they're properly credentialed. And so um what Stephanie's team does is so very, very important to making sure that on our end, the healthcare people are doing things correctly and indefensible.
And Dr. Caldwell?
I've already, I've already spoke spoke a lot, so trust me, I'm not gonna belabor this part. Hi, my name is Dr. Melissa Caldwell, I'm a clinical and forensic psychologist by trade, I've been with um ACH and now FPH, FPH was created the last two years because we grow so much in the area of behavioral health, mental health and addiction recovery. Uh we're still part of the ACH business family, I've been with ACH for fifteen years, um been with Dr. Johnson um for over eighteen. And I will tell you, I left uh government work because I was so impressed with the integrity of this company and the the intention and delivery to do things correctly. So I just wanted to highlight that even though that the mental health pieces on your bid are optional. I'm sorry, you can't get away from mental health because mental health is so much part of our overall healthcare. We approach patient healthcare from a head-to-toe standpoint, whole person care. So um you know, it would be great if you think about those options, but what you do is you have built-in pieces. So one thing is you have twenty-four seven consults to our our mental health team to be able to discuss cases, so that's available to your facility, your community. Um we will definitely find resources if we are not the one to be able to help assist with that, we will collaborate with your community care. Additionally, we also believe very much that um officer wellness is critical care. Healthy professionals are better professionals and I would say I'll extend that beyond um officers, we've taken care of various members of the community in the colony. When we have a member of our community who's struggling either professionally or personally, we wanna take care of them. So we have a program that's available that's of no cost built into the partnership that takes care of the teams. That could be the dispatcher who's going through a bad divorce, that could be the county treasurer who's going through a tough time with a health issue. So I want you just to know that that is available to you because that's our commitment to our community, so can we go to the next slide? The one thing that we pride ourselves, whether again you choose those options or not, you're gonna have clinical expertise. You're gonna have a medical team that um is looking at the person's whole care. So when they see someone come into your facility and they're acting strange, they're not immediately gonna assume, well, they're mentally ill, they're going to make sure that they do the adequate ruleouts and find out the person has an infection or they have a bad liver so that you don't have a negative outcome that then leads to a catastrophic lawsuit and bankrupts your colony. Unfortunately, colonies are are under that struggle. Uh I would say in terms of any of the services in your colony, probably the biggest ticking time bomb, I hate to say it, is the services that are provided in the jail environment because they're the only population in the country that have the constitutional right to healthcare. And it's why it's so critical to make sure you have qualified people with the proper insurance. And I'll go even further, I heard earlier discussion about MedMal, but it's not just MedMal, it's al- also Civil Liberties Insurance. We, every year, our company has to meet with our insurance providers and our brokers and I'm proud to say that our premiums have generally gone down. Why? Because we showed them the staff, because we have saved lives. Because we will do things correctly, because you won't work in communities that are not good partners or don't wanna do the right thing. We're here because we believe that you'd be a great partner. Uh but make sure that you have not only MedMal and Civil Liberties Insurance, anybody who comes into your jail that provides healthcare needs to have both. Otherwise, that liability will fall on your colony. So again, behavioral health is mental health, substance abuse, but it's also occupational health. Equipping the officers to be able to do the right thing, supporting your community. We also provide training um routinely and also mental health first aid, which will allow your officers to have certifications in how to deal with someone who's dealing with the mental health and substance abuse, all built into the program that we are preventing, um presenting to you today. Thank you for your time. Oh, sorry, really, really important. We also think it's really important to to give accolades where accolades are due. Uh unfortunately, we don't get to defend ourselves in the media and the media likes to talk about our bad outcomes, but not our successes, which happen every day. So the Eagle Award is now a national award that that awards uh for heroic actions in the area of professional wellness and behavioral health. And we have had a number of recipients over the last year to two years. And um again, we hope to do quality work for your team so that, again, you have that same prestige, thank you.
So Stephanie, our training and compliance partners, this is so important, y'all. Um to be able to make sure that not only is the regulatory um compliance net, but that we're training. Um we're training your officers as well as our employees to make sure that they are doing the right thing and that they know the right thing to do, we like to think that most folks that work in law enforcement corrections in the county are there to do the right thing, they're there to help. Um the problem comes in at the ever-changing environment that we have, that they don't know what the right thing is to do, because last week it was okay to do this. This week the court says it's not. This week the court says it's not. So that's what's so important and it's such a great piece of this that, you know, that I love is to be able to say that we're not only partnering y'all, that we're doing the right thing, we're helping y'all to know what the right thing is to do. Stephanie, can I explain to them what Spark does and how it collaborates with um ACH's model for the jail?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, as I mentioned, I'm relatively new in uh my new role as the Director of Compliance. Um, Brittany Krasinski has moved into a new role as well as our President of Communications and Training. Um, and we are a dynamic duo for sure. I would say that it's very, it's a very interesting um relationship between Spark Training and the overall organization, right? Because we're working with not only the clinical staff that potentially would serve in your jail, the practitioners, the nurses, the behavioral health staff as well, um, as far as training goes. But we also offer a online program for the, the frontline correctional staff. Um, so we have almost twenty courses online that, as Anna mentioned, is, is part of this um contractual agreement. It's a value add. Um, it is, we put out new courses on a quarterly basis. We have an incredible instructional design team um who do a really great job at creating relevant but digestible, so they're shorter modules, right, which is what everybody loves. You're not gonna sit in front of a computer screen and listen to a narrator read to you a PowerPoint for thirty minutes because I think we've all sat through that kind of training and we're not interested in providing that. Um, we want this to be meaningful for the officers and we want it to actually cause them to um hopefully change their behavior in a positive manner. Um, as I mentioned, we also have um regulatory and accreditation support. We offer NC conferences. Um, so we'll be hosting four uh regional jail summits this year. Um, historically, we've done individual states and we're kind of building a program where we can include multiple states into one um, one training event, which is really awesome in my opinion, um, definitely more bang for our buck and more networking on the behalf of the attendees. Um, we also put out blogs um on uh our website that, that are free for you to access even right now if you wanted to go check that out. Um, and as part of the, the compliance work that I'm doing now, we also offer mortality review. So we have a, a pretty good reputation at this point for delivering those within thirty days at max. Um, that is our, our goal for sure, so to make sure that we can review immortality, offer any recommendations to the site. Um, and we partner with Dr. Caldwell and Melanie Stroda for those, those clinical perspectives on those cases as well. So um, it's definitely a very um robust and comprehensive program from the training to the, the compliance aspect. Um, and I think that would be a, a huge benefit to your organization.
Stephanie, if I can also add, because mortality, I think, makes everybody cringe. No, we are not planning for you to have any of those. Um, but we also review cases where, you know what, maybe something could be done differently or better. Um, so of course our living patients and, and just trying to do QA. So that's also part of that process.
Thank you. The EMR, I don't, I don't think Jamie's on today, but our EMRs, we, we've touched on that a little bit about that. Um, that is um just the way this industry is moving, um, to be able to do everything electronically. I know y'all are on paper system right now. You have a piece in the RFP that um gives you a pricing for EMR. Um, it's super easy, it is state-of-the-art, it, all of the updates are free. So unlike a lot of our competitors and a lot of the um, if y'all ever dealt with maintenance on IT, it's absolutely a revolving, another payment for this, another payment for that. If you want an update, you gotta buy the update. It's not like that with us, um, everything comes free. Whenever we get an update, y'all get an update in real time and you have complete support available to transition from your paper to your EMR. And um, that's just another part of helping with liability. One of the things that our company and across uh this, the industry has found is that reporting documentation, being able to access that um easily and making sure that that's done in a way, again, that is defendable, is important. If something were to happen and you did get sued, you know, they're gonna ask for training logs and they're gonna ask for all of your medical records. And um, so having that available for them is um a really, a really good asset. So if that's something that down the road you want to do, we'll set up a demo for you and help see what we have. Quality patient care and risk management. This is probably my biggest, um, my biggest piece of what ACH does for the county, risk management. Um, it's one thing to be able to defend something after something happens, right? But our goal is that we reduce the liability, we reduce the risk, we reduce the um problems that you have that lead to these kind of um events. So the, the module that ACH does to have individualized care is what helps reduce your risk in your jail. So um, right now, I think they talked a little bit about um, about how we save lives, how we, how our module helps reduce that. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we had um twenty-five Golden Setscups, which are a lot life-saving awards and also twenty-eight overdose revival awards. And these are given to our employees. We believe that recognizing the employees that do good works. And several of these were also given to COs, right? Um, so when somebody saves a life in your jail, we recognize that. Um, we put the, the um steps in place to be able to do that, the training to know when to recognize something's going wrong and then we recognize them when they do the right thing. Because a lot of times your jail staff and the nurses that work in the side of the jail, they are truly unsung heroes. They are not getting the recognition they deserve. Anytime something bad happens, you're gonna see that all over, blasted all over the news. But we want to make sure that we recognize when they are doing the right thing. This is huge for us. Um, I think Jonathan, you've got, you also have um um, a place in the RFP response about the actual suicide deaths and that kind of thing. ACH has the lowest death rate of our competitors across the board. This, this is not just the right thing and it leads to saving lives. In terms of what it does for the county is it makes you um, makes you less liable, right? Delivered indifference is something everybody has heard. That's where they're gonna stick you at. And when you look at a company that is making um huge strides in reducing death rates and mortality in jails and getting the right care, that helps you from a liability standpoint on the delivered indifference. Um, I think Dr. Caldwell talked a little bit about the civil rights liability. That's what covers you in a nineteen eighty-three federal lawsuit. And that's how you're gonna get sued, folks. I mean, that's where it's gonna happen, is a federal lawsuit for a violation of a constitutional right to healthcare. So it's not just MEDMOW and this is what's gonna help you when that happens, if it does.
So Anna, can we go back to, real very, very briefly? In case you were wondering why it says in custody versus not in custody, one, we stay very much on the industry data. Um, DOJ Bureau of Justice statistics in terms of suicides. And what came out in the last year or so was recognition that how jails were being asked about suicides unfortunately caused underreporting. We have always um been very transparent about what happens with our patients and wanting to learn how to do things better. Um, unfortunately, we're taking care of patients nearly forty thousand at any given time. It's like a small community, right? Or actually a pretty decent community. I, I grew up in a community the size of two thousand. So forty thousand is a pretty decent-sized town. You have patients who pass away for any myriad of things. And so it's not sufficient to say, I'm only gonna count the ones that die in the jail. What about the ones that hung themselves in the jail, but then they died a month later from the brain injury? It is not honest, it's not transparent, not to count those. So we have, as a company, have always tracked those incidents and, and use those as an opportunity to learn to do better. So that's why you see that lighter orange is those higher numbers. But when we look at DOJ apples-to-apples comparison of what competitors are using of that in custody rate, we were always much lower. We're much lower on both respects. Reuters tried to do a hit pa- piece a few years ago, looking at our industry uh bashing law enforcement, bashing, bashing correctional healthcare as an adjunct. And what we found is that uh validation that we have the lowest death rates, lowest suicide rates for the industry and, and compared to national rates as well.
And that's actually in the RFP, it's on pages seventy-one through seventy-five, the hit pieces.
One of the things I think that's important right now is being able to retain employees. Y'all know that, that issues that we have um with recruiting and retaining. Um, ACH has a very good um program to try and recruit quality employees and then um all the recognition programs and the annual raises and training and things like that that we provide for them um as well as the um individual education pieces that help them advance in their career. So that helps y'all because that keeps you staffed. And we staffed at um a hundred and six percent of our contracted hours in twenty twenty-two. Um, ACH is a little bit different than all of the other competitors that we have, that we know of. Um, we pay you back, we staff on hours. You will see the number of hours per week that we're supposed to staff you and we will pay you back on any unstaffed hour that we don't staff. So you don't have a set price and then if we're there, we're there. Um, some of the, some of the vendors staff according to shifts. So if a nurse is available on that shift, they consider it staffed. Um, we staff according to hours. So we understand um the fiduciary responsibility of making sure that you get every dollar's worth of your money. Thanks. Insurance metrics, you heard a little bit about that from the last presenter and it is a serious issue right now. There are several companies that are not even being able to get insurance um to cover in jails. MEDMOW does not cover you for a nineteen eighty-three federal violation. Again, we've talked about that. And that's where those huge amounts of settlements are coming and that are breaking counties and cities across the country from these twenty and thirty million dollar verdicts that are happening um from lack of correct medical care. So we are covered for civil rights liability insurance as well as MEDMOW. Savings and Jo- Jonathan, I think you've got the numbers for what we saved in Michigan.
Yeah. On page seventy of the RFP too, it talks about this. Uh, we do something called bill scrubbing for you for any time that the uh, the detainee goes to the hospital, has to have dialysis, lab, x-rays, any of the specialty consults like OB, OB-GYN, stuff like that. And, and Michigan, we save on average fifty percent off of those bills. So if, if you get a bill, say for three thousand dollars, um, we could probably save you on average fifteen hundred on that bill. And then what happens is you pay a one-time fee of uh seventeen dollars plus a thirty percent of the savings to ACH for doing that, which saves you in the long run.
Yeah, so, so you, you, the more we save you money, the better, the better we are. So it's a partnership. We try and save you more money and um it's, it's a really good program there that comes with, we have specially-built scrubbers um that comes with your package. And the other thing that happens is we reconcile down. So your ADP is fluctuating, that's your average daily population in your facility fluctuate. So you, so this RFP is written based on seventy-five um average of your inmates a day. If you're, if you go up, you'll see something called a per diem rate. If you go up over the seventy-five for a quarter and it's an average of that quarter, then you're charged just the per diem rate extra. But let's say you go down. Everybody knows during Christmas and all that, it goes down. So if you go down in Illinois, there is a um, a big push to have inmates released. There's a no bail, bail bond thing and so their jail population is going down. We front, refund that as well. So if you're down, we give you your money back. Um, it, and that, we kept that in COVID. So something that was super important to me that I found that just was an example of the tenants of the company that I was talking about is ACH gave back over a million dollars to their clients during COVID because the, the numbers of the jails went down. We didn't take the whole, it's a, you know, act of God or it's beyond our control or it's a pandemic and just too bad y'all are gonna pay whether you're there or not. They gave the money back. In addition to giving that money back, something that I thought was huge for them is that when there was such a shortage of nurses and we couldn't staff, they paid the difference and got um agency staffing in and gave, paid those higher rates without charging our clients the difference in that. Um, they took a huge hit during COVID and they didn't have to. And, but it was the right thing to do.
And they didn't do it by, I think some of the just, oh, they, they reduced staffing, right? That's how they paid the money back. No, we don't believe on making any money from not providing the services. We credit back services that are not delivered. Uh, but in terms of COVID, no, we kept people employed. They, they needed their jobs, they needed to keep the, the jail going. ADP went down, which meant that our insurance costs went down. And that's how we were also able, I mean, it's only fair. If we're not having to pay those backend expenses, then that should be returned to the colony and that's what happened.
So that's a huge difference. And you'll see several, um, several of our clients that have spoken up for us and have given good recommendations and those are in your RFP response as well. Um, we're proud of the work we do. We're proud of the ability to try and help counties and help sheriffs and to help the inmates and their families. And that's important to all of us. And um, so we would, we would love the opportunity to try and help you in your jail. Um, our client satisfaction rate is above ninety percent on every single division in our company. We do annual client surveys and we actually act on those when we see those. Um, I see them come across if there is something that a client has said that we missed a boat on and, and their particular jail, it's immediate that we are on it and trying to fix it. And then try and figure out why we dropped that ball so that we could fix that the next time and it doesn't happen. Our goal is to make your lives easier to solve problems for you. Um, nobody wants to deal with jail problems. Nobody wants to deal with medical in jail, nobody wants to deal with staffing in the jail. Y'all really don't want to hear about us at all. You just want us to do our job and it, it, it runs smoothly. So that's our job, that's what we try to do. One of the things that's important is that when you're looking at those RFPs, we try as best we can to do apples-to-apples, but it's clear that every company is not the same. So we want to try and partner with you. We feel like we give you a huge service for your money. Um, all of those services tie in together to protect the county. It protects, when we protect the inmates, we protect the sheriff, we protect the county. And so if there's an issue, if there's something in there that you say, gosh, we would love to have you, ACH, but you're just a little bit higher than that guy, let us know, let us, let us see what we can do to negotiate and try and help give you what you need for your jail because again, all jails are, are different. There's something we might can do to tweak and be able to get you in your budget. That's, that's my job. That's our job is to try and help get you in a budget to where you can provide the best healthcare for your patients. Bitterness of poor quality remains long after the sweetness of low price. We know that sometimes we are higher, um, we know that. But we also believe that there's value in what we give you on every single thing we give you. And a lot of times I've, I've looked at the, the counties that went ahead and made the leap and took the extra pricing. And at the end of the year, when they look at all the discounts that we do, the savings that we do, the ACH umbrella for your discounted values on your vendors, it winds up being close to or less than some of our competitors charged. So the backend price that you get um by giving us an opportunity to show you how we do business really is a value. Yeah. So that's um, that's our presentation for this morning. I'm glad we got in there under an hour for you. And we're here to answer questions and to help you uh make that decision easier for you by anything you, you have a question about, um, about our services or about the RFP response that we did.
Mr. Simmons, you had a question?
Yes, I have a couple of questions after listening to your presentation. Did your company have anyone here on the ground taking care of these patients? Or do you partnership with people in our community to come in and take that responsibility?
I'm kind of confused about the question. Um, we have our own staff. We have staff that support staff that goes to H Jail. And we also hire within the community for licensed um adequate personnel that can come in um as, as a nurse or a doctor there in your community. In terms of partnering with your community, um, we partner with your community on um discharge. And certainly we want to make sure that, that when the patients are, are, go into your community and they leave the jail, that we have um developed that partnership to help them transition if, if that.
We try to keep as much of our staffing local as possible. Um, I mean, certainly the leadership, you, you see Michigan leadership sitting at your table. Um, there's all their, you know, Michigan leadership that is not here. Um, and then, yeah, you have also the extended leadership team available to you. But we, we, we want to hire local. I mean, those are individuals that know your community, they know your patients. Um, it's beneficial to, to us to do that.
When, when you hire locally here, so they're not, you kind of then contract out, it sounds like to me, they, they don't actually work for your company until you contract with someone local here to come in and facilitate the patient.
No, no.
Let, let me explain that. So because I do the hiring process, right, for the, for each jail, and I am a Michigander, born and raised. The best quality you're gonna get is someone that's homegrown, to be quite honest with you, they know the community. So when I hire, they work for ACH, right? It is not an agency. It is someone in the community that knows the, the community in terms of what are the, the, the largest drug issues here, right? We know they're different from community to community. They know what, if it's a cardiac issue, cardiac issues that plague that commi- community. Um, I'll use our, our hub, right? You know, the, the city of Detroit. If I worked in the city of Detroit, I know what the drug of choice is there. So I know what to expect when I come. So if I brought someone from the outside, they're not going to know your community the same way. So they, I, I hire to the best of my ability. So it may be within a thirty mile radius, you know, thirty minutes up the street. Uh, that's how we hire. So when we put the app, I'm sorry, put the request for nurses, they work for us, they're benefited through us. And so when you have a question, I can speak to that, that nurse. Because I know the nurse, it's not from another company.
Okay, so we call the company and you hire someone locally because they know the area. Do you pay for that service for that nurse, or do we pay for that service for that one that you hire?
That's in your contract, right? So you're contracted for healthcare with, we're, we're not an agency, we're a healthcare provider, right? And so we're not going out to other companies. That's something that we do if you're thinking about agency nurses. That's a temporary fix. Um, I don't know, someone's off for, I don't know, having a baby, that's a coverage. The nurse for the facility is the nurse for the facility. So there is no additional money for the nurse to come in and do their, do their job.
Yeah, it's all, it's all wrapped, wrapped up. We, we employ the person, we provide their benefits. We, we back them with Med Mal and Civil Liberties Insurance. Um, we train them, we oversee them, we own their, their positive and negative outcomes. That becomes a company thing, that's our responsibility. Um, but in term, yeah, in terms of what you pay, you're paying the, the company, and then we're, we're employing and managing. And if you have, for example, staff that you want to retain and that's feasible, we've done that with facilities where we look at those individuals and certainly we vet them and will inform the team if they're, they don't have the qualifications or there's an issue. But we would love to retain good people. So we hire them on as our own, they become ACH employees.
Okay, when I was looking, when I was listening to your presentation, uh, and I may have misunderstood, it sounds like you provide assistance, um, your care remotely, a lot of remote.
That's in addition to the boots on the ground. You get, it's, it's a, a safety net for you. So your doctor and your nurses will be onsite and they will be there on the schedule. And then if something happens, so let's see, let's say you have a doctor for four hours a week that's onsite, that's your doctor. But something happens at two o'clock in the morning and you need a doctor, you have that available on call twenty-four seven, and also Telmed is available because they're not onsite. So that is to cover you when your, when your doctor is not onsite, but your doctor will be onsite every week for you.
And all those providers are Michigan licensed, so even though, forgive me, I'm Wisconsin, okay? Don't judge me too harshly, I'm, I'm a Michigan licensed psychologist. Um, I have gotten in the car and, and driven to my, my Michigan and neighbors to provide care. Um, so, yeah, in terms of any of your healthcare delivery, it's by Michigan licensed people, either local or in support.
And you'll have, just like your nurse, you'll have your onsite doctor, and that'll be your doctor for your site. You'll have your nurses for your site. But the, the great thing about having ACH safety net is that your doctor can't make it that day. Um, you still have a safety net there. We have a pool of nurses and a pool of doctors that are there for support.
When you say our doctor and our nurses, are those the doctors and the nurses that you contract and they work for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, we don't contract, we, we employ.
I mean, hire them.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think our, our verbiage is probably confusing. Can we say your doctor? Because our intention is to partner with you so well that there aren't those lines. So the, the doctors and the nurses working in your county facility are gonna be your team. Certainly they're employed and supported by us as the company. Um, but, you know, it, it shouldn't be, oh, well, he, here's ACH and here's your county. It should be well-integrated, they should have commitment to your county. So it shouldn't feel like they're not your employees, even though they're on our payroll.
Yeah, I understand now, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, will tea?
Um, appreciate you guys being here. Very impressive presentation, amount of people you guys have involved. I just had one question in regards to the slide that Jonathan spoke of. For medical claims, there is a set fee, and then he had stated that the amount of money saved, there was a thirty percent payback to you guys?
That's correct. So it's a seventeen dollar per claim. So we don't charge you in your, in your RFP, the set amount doesn't include these claims. But the more money we save you, the better off we are. We get thirty percent of only the amount of money we saved, right? So if your total amount that we saved you off your original bill is a hundred dollars, then we get thirty dollars of that savings. You would just owe us thirty dollars back. So you would save seven hundred dollars off of your original bill. Does that, does that make it better, understanding?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I understood it, I just questioned it, this kind of, okay.
Yeah.
Seems kind of unpredictable.
Oh, I mean, here, here's the way I think about it, in terms of you get a hospital bill. Um, our, our team is really, really skilled at finding where the savings are. Uh, you know, if things aren't coded correctly, if they're not responsible for this, and doggedly pursuing those savings for the colony. Some counties have a staff member who's dedicated for the sheriff's department to do nothing but rebilling of offsite stuff. So rather than having someone who does that, that's what we offer. But again, that's just a supportive offer, it's not something that you're paying for unless you use. Um, and if you have someone who is dedicated and does that thing and does it well, then maybe this is not something that benefits you, but it's available to you to save your money. And we have saved colonies millions of dollars by having the talent to pursue those hospital bills.
It's a great, it's a great investment because it doesn't cost you anything unless you use it, right? So I'll give you just kind of one example of when I was sheriff. I had a med flight, I have no idea why they med flighted us because we're only twenty minutes from the hospital. It took them longer to get that, the med flight there than it took them to, that we could have drove them. But they med flighted us and my bill was over thirty-five thousand dollars, okay, for that one flight. Um, but we scrubbed the bill down, they got the bill scrubbed down to where it, they actually only charged us at less than a thousand dollars. So it was way worth the thirty percent to be able to pay that instead of thirty-five thousand dollars, which I wasn't successfully getting down, right? I mean, Med Flight wasn't talking to me, we're the county, we can pay it. But bill scrubbers got that down to less than a thousand dollars. So I pay the percentage of the, of the bill to the bill scrubbers rather than the whole bill to Med Flight. If that kind of makes sense. It doesn't, didn't cost me anything extra because I was gonna have to pay thirty-five thousand if they didn't scrub the bill for me.
Mr. Scott?
So does that, if the bill is thirty-five thousand and you got it down to a thousand dollars, does that mean we give you thirty percent of thirty-four thousand dollars?
A three hundred.
Thirty percent.
Of the bill, right? So if you, you have to pay a thousand dollars on a, you're paying, you're, you're paying a, a three hundred dollars plus, correct, of the savings? Or is it, is that the three?
It's of the savings that we save, that's correct. Not the total bill of what it was, not the total bill of the thirty-five thousand, thirty percent of the thirty-four thousand that we saved.
Gotcha, yes.
Yeah, and it would be prudent for y'all to do these mainly on larger bills. If you get a bill for, you know, five hundred bucks, it probably isn't gonna pay you to actually pay us to do the bill scrubbing, right? Because that's not a huge bill. But if you get a thirty-five thousand dollar bill that the county's responsible for, and we can get it down to that one thousand dollars, it would be prudent for taxpayers' money at least to, to look at that. Um, as far as the thirty percent plus the seventeen dollars per claim, that is actually what is allowed under Michigan law. So that's why it is that way. Some states have other laws, but the law in Michigan is, is stated that way. So that's why it's, it's written in there like that.
We just repriced a bill for a client of mine in Illinois, the hospital, and it was, it was wrong billing, it was wrong dates. Um, we repriced a bill, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for an outpatient hospital bill. And they repriced Lee County down to six hundred and twenty-two dollars. That is huge. It took them almost three months to do that of working with all of the different providers and the, the different offsites and things like that. But that's a huge savings. It's not required that y'all use it at all. You can pick and choose when you use one, you don't have to use it at all, but it's a huge savings benefits. I mean, the county would have paid a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. They paid six hundred and something plus our thirty percent. So it made a big difference in that kind of situation. And one of the things that most of us that are not in medical pricing don't understand is all of the little coding that's done, our nurses go through and every bill that comes in, they make sure that that inmate was actually in the facility at the time, that it wasn't a pre-existing condition, that's not, uh, that's not got to be paid by the county. They make sure that that, those dates were correct. They find mistakes like that all the time. Um, so that's one of the things that is of value for your budget is to be able to make sure, first of all, that the bills are correct. And second of all, that if we can save you money, um, our medical claims repricing department will do that for you, but you don't have to if you don't want to.
Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for this?
Yeah, I sure do.
Go ahead.
I got a couple of comments. I like the RN thing over the LPN thing. Uh, I like the, I like that your company only does this to jails. That is a huge thing for me. This is not just a, a medical group that comes in and, and does a jail here and there or does just ours. Um, those added benefits, those are great, everything. I, I want to cover the, the, the primary basis that we ought to have as far as coverage. The added stuff is great. I don't mind, I like the, I like the scrubbing of the bills and stuff like that because I, I know that we're, I would predict that we're frivolously spending money that we don't have to. I mean, it's the way we've always done it, why not, you know? So, um, uh, I like the, yeah, RN, um, that backs us up legally. We're always talking liability, I hear this constantly from everybody. Um, well, there you go, RN over LPN, I know the difference, my wife was an LPN. Uh, I, I just, I, I hear this background, I mean, your background yourself with, with your brothers and deputies and, and stuff like that. I mean, that, that just goes a long ways. We were told, I, I'll just make it public, we were told there was no other place to call. This was the only, we only had one option. That's what it was last time. And all of a sudden, holy smokes, we got a whole bunch of people showing up, you know? I think, you know, I'm good.
I just wanted to add to that, I like the physician on, on a weekly basis as well. I, I think what, as far as your contract that you've presented to us, um, the, can you briefly explain the malpractice unpredictability from, from year to year as far as cost?
I can't.
The cost wise?
Doctor Caldwell, did you want to?
No, so we, we, we're, we're not going to approach you and go, you know what, our insurance premiums went up and you now have to pay us more, if that's what you're asking. So, yeah, we have unpredictability in lots of different areas. You know, that could be in paying, you know, a nurse, the nursing rates have gone crazy in the last, no offense, I love my nurses, they're valuable. But I, I, I would say we were paying nurses maybe twenty-some dollars, you know, just a few years ago, and now some of them are getting fifty, sixty bucks an hour. So there's unpredictability. And certainly we would communicate with you as a partner, but you're not gonna get within, within a budget year a, no, surprise, surprise, you need to pay us more because our insurance rate went up. So if that's what you're asking, I think that's what, that's what's good about a contract is it tries to anticipate some of those, those things. And it provides some consistency, at least in terms of what you're paying.
I also think, um, look at in terms of that is that the stability of our company and the length and the time that we have been in this business and the fact that we do three hundred and seventy-plus jails a year with over thirty-eight thousand inmates is able to spread that insurance across a wider, um, a wider span. And we're able to get better rates because of the historical data that we have on being able to keep the liability risks low.
We have to meet with our insurance people like at least once a year, if not more. We have another one coming up just in April. And it really is us explaining to them why we're a good bet. They would not insure us if they didn't see that we're caring for people correctly and thus the risk management was being addressed. Um, we're not being bankrupted like some of our competitors. Some of our competitors this last year went bankrupt because of nuclear lawsuits. I think one lawsuit was like eighty-five million dollars, and then on appeal, it became forty-five million. So think about your limits, who's paying for that extra money? And if it's a civil liberties insurance and your provider only has Med Mal, then that falls completely on the colony and it's catastrophic to the professionals who are working. So, um, we are very proud of the fact that, yes, we have to justify our existence every year to our insurance providers because they know that we have a volatile industry that's not really treated very nicely in the medium. But they're proud of us because we are doing good work. I think people actually leave us, our data shows, they leave us healthier than when they came in. They're getting better care than they were getting by their own doctors in the community, which is a sad thing to say, but we're proud of what we do. I've been in corrections for over thirty years. I never planned on being in corrections. It kind of happened accidental and then it just, you know, and I, I, I think it's very, very important work. I wanted to be a public servant. I wanted to serve our communities. And how we do that is by dealing with individuals who may not be the best citizens to help them to be healthy citizens moving forward. So we, we have a lot of vested interest in doing this correctly.
Because we, we do gotta move on, we do got quite a bit of stuff here, but Tim, do you have anything, any questions you wanted to?
I don't know.
Add to this?
No. I, I would suggest though, because of the volume of information you have, it might be good to refer this to the law enforcement committee to do the deep dive and come back with a recommendation.
Okay, okay. I do appreciate, appreciate you guys' time and, and, and making the trip and all the information and, and, and the presentation and the information. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your time on.
Thank you very much.
Drive safe.
You send us lots of Michigan jails?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Send it to Tim.
Your, yeah.
Thank you.
Next we have the transit. Hi, Ray.
Good morning. Well, I believe I'm here to kind of.
You're here, yes.
Yep.
Millet's proposals, we're still under Millet's proposals, you're the final one on there.
Also, we're talking about the Millet.
Yeah, your transit, your three discussion.
More things after that.
Yes.
Okay. Been sitting all morning, Tim.
What did you have on the Millet's proposals?
Um, you mean the amount or?
Yeah. No, go ahead, Tim, you says Millet's proposals.
Came out of discussion at the Transit Committee meeting, and I think they were simply looking for an update on what the board's thoughts were as far as moving forward. Now Commissioner Simmons provided us at the last meeting, uh, table that showed, I think this one was coming August, what we were projecting.
The millet's, the date?
I think I saw the committee wise, just kind of a clarification.
Yes, August.
Gave it to happy to all of us.
August, here it is.
It's in my desk.
What's August? That's when the.
Yes.
Was it the transit millet?
Transit, no, we haven't, I mean, we've talked numbers, we haven't settled on anything yet, and I don't, it's, it's not urgent that we do that right now. But I think the committee just wanted the assurance that it wasn't this.
You have anything to add to that? There'll be more to come?
No, as long as we're, we'll, we'll discuss how much millet's at a later date, I believe.
We just don't want to miss any deadlines.
Right, exactly.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Item B Transit Committee, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The Transit Committee, we have one bus advertising agreement.
That I believe has been signed or will be signed.
This is um for the board to consider and uh if they agree, then it will be on Thursday for.
So something.
What is this?
Late promotions and they are they are the um entity that is is putting the wraps on our buses now. Well, they have been since I've been there.
Okay.
And
I have a question.
Our our board um kind of put him on the spot and because he really was, you know, really aggressively looking for advertising and he has since um really developed a a good advertising plan. That's a three-year plan, I believe, isn't it? Charlie and um pretty much all of our buses are going to be wrapped and they, in fact, they got one wrapped um this Tuesday morning, got one wrapped Tuesday morning and it's for the Fair Board for next year's, next year's um Ogumaw County Fair. But it's it's not going to create any revenue for us um for the three years because he's, he is spending all of this money out of his pocket to do all of this, so.
Somebody's paying him.
Oh, and some of them are, some of them are.
The fair, the fair ban?
I I don't know.
So we're doing it just because?
So can I, can I add to that? Um we talked about this, I believe it was at the last meeting this got brought up, but the the biggest factors for us is, I mean, there's a number of things. The wrap actually helps protect the bus, but the main, the main things are is that events throughout our area are used as advertisements, so that does help our area, our local economy. Plus also the buses are going to be more flashy. Someone who's been thinking about possibly riding the bus, they see the bus like, oh, wow. Oh, cool. That event's going on. You know what? I should ride the bus once. So there there's that also, the added benefit. Then also in this agreement, we do have um I don't know if it's stated here, but the radio station, it's a local radio station that is um listened by, it sounds like quite a bit of our county residents listen to the station. We will be able to advertise on that station throughout the season with, throughout the year with no charge for transit for s- for, you know, if we have something coming up with the transit, if we have any changes or anything, or just to promote the transit period to use it. Um we'll also be able to do that throughout the whole year for no charge. So that's an added bonus as well.
And it is ninety-eight and a half FM out of Ogumaw Lake.
Do you have anything, Commissioner?
Yes, I do have pleasure. I'm looking at this contract and is Kirk Middleton is doing this? Yes, he came, I think, I think he was gone at one of our meetings when he was there. But the transit is representing on this contract is Isabella County, not Ogumaw County.
At the very bottom.
Oh, it's just an error.
I did notice that too.
Well, we don't want to make the contract with Isabella County.
I thought, I thought maybe he had had um copied a contract, maybe this they had with them.
It is.
Yeah, we'll just have to get that.
There's nobody that does that locally, this wrapping?
No.
Is this Gaylord's the closest we have?
He used to live here at West Branch and he's, he was born here in Ogumaw County, but he's moved to Gaylord to just it's a better area up there, larger area, I should say.
That's fair. I just want to make sure there's nobody local. We're we're talking about local advertising.
Design company down in Standish does it. They do all of, all of the forwards, wrapping, everything. Their tankers, right down to the smallest trucks.
I have another comment.
Go ahead.
Um so Tom Krebs, who is very active on our Transit Committee, he's kind of quarterbacked this. And initially when we all saw the contract, of course, the first thing we saw was no, well, no compensation to us. But again, I think the benefits that we're going to get from this are going to um, you know, be a a very big plus for us. And I think it will increase our ridership.
Yeah, I don't think the the question, I don't think anybody has a question on the compensation, do they? I I I mean, I don't think.
I had a question on who, who's going to sign Isabella County or us?
No, I.
But I mean, I think that was answered the fir- the first round. I think now I, the question was, was is there anybody local that that can do this? Okay.
Wow, this is this is the same thing I just talked about with, we don't, we don't look. We don't look.
That's, that was a question.
I I tell you what, what they get for a billboard on the side of the road and this thing will be driving all over the place, you better believe it. I seventy-five, one of those billboards out there is three thousand dollars a month.
So we don't actually know, like, say, like, uh, an agency, we don't know what they're paying Mr. Middleton to do this. We just know that there's no cost to to us to have it on our, our vehicle, perhaps?
Actually, we do, as far as the advertising we have now, we're we're getting, we're getting paid forty percent of what um he collapsed, so.
So there is a compensation to us.
Yes, for for the ads that 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 we are running now. Um we have, I think, three, three different ads, but don't quote me on who they are. But they've been running for, uh, more than a couple of years. They just keep renewing. And um it's been three hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents for the last two years, so that's forty percent of what he takes in.
A- and now we're eliminating that forty percent? Am I understanding this correctly?
Um it would be the same for any advertising in the future, but this advertising plan that he's put together, he's got a list of all the people that he has contacted that we're going to advertise with or for, I should say, for this three-year plan and it may um, it may um generate more advertising in the future. So if someone else new comes along and wants to advertise, we will get our forty percent of that. They won't be included in this. This promotion that he's putting together at this point.
I guess I I apologize. I'm still confused. I agree with the advertising a hundred percent. My my bottom line question is, is the forty percent we're still collecting that, so there is a compensation to us.
But but this is for existing advertising. Advertising we are, that are on our buses right now.
Prior to the contract.
Yes, prior to this um, this contract that he's wanting us to sign and in the future. But those, we will still, we will still collect that.
But the new ones going forward, we will not collect the forty percent.
Um not, not the ones that he has put together.
And it's all advertising.
Yes, yeah.
So he gets to retain a hundred percent of all advertising revenue generated during the three-year period of contract. I can see an argument coming up. If you're going to stand with, you get, you get a customer, he, you get forty percent. It says right there, he gets a hundred percent.
But I believe it's, oh, it's only the people that he has lined up at this point. Is that correct?
Well, that's not what the contract said.
So then it'll have to be discussed more with him.
Yeah, this isn't making sense to me, I guess. I I agree with the advertising a hundred percent. I just.
Does it show anything on your, what you're looking at about um the entities that he has?
Can can I, can I add this one? And Tim, maybe you could add, you were there at the meeting as well. And I think it's pretty much just for his existing promotion because it was a big conversation again for us as a committee because we saw that one hundred percent compensation towards him. Tim, do you have anything to add on to?
I I think the division that we were talking about is right. I think what they're saying right now is you you keep your forty percent that you have now. But moving forward, they're going to take a hundred percent of the advertising, okay? But it's part of a pen. It includes the rap, it includes the radio ads and and so on. So there's value, you know, obviously to the transit to having it. Pretty confident that's what it says, but hearing this conversation, I'm sure it's locked down.
I I agree with Commissioner Scott. Uh the advertisement on that radio, just for that just on that radio station for the transit or for?
Yeah, so it'll be, uh, those will be for transit, so you transit operates during these hours or or whatever. If transit has a special promotion going, you talked at sometimes about reducing fees for certain events. I mean, you could put that on the radio. Um it's more or less an awareness. I've heard these ads, not just here, I mean, across the state, you hear them. The latest one I heard ironically was for Isabella County and it was just simply putting the notice out there that it's available. It's a service. And that ad was running at least once an hour on the station I was listening to. Uh so if you get that kind of awareness, you know, built up, I, you know, think as Commissioner Milcey was saying, it plants the seed. In this public transportation here, it might be an opportunity to use it. Uh but as far as the the advertising is concerned, I I do think, and I know we were on a time crunch, but I think we need to lock that down a little bit better.
Yeah, let's talk to Wade. Oh, those are good questions. And again, they were a concern of ours of the committee and, you know, it'd be nice to have Tom here today because Tom has quarterbacked this. But no, we can talk with Wade, find out those, you know, exact questions that are concerned.
Tim, have you talked to the place in Standish at all? Are you aware of them and their, and their, what they offer, what they offer? Is there a possibility you're able to reach out to them to see what?
They're probably not going to sell the ads, though. That'll probably be the difference. They won't sell the ads, but they do wrap.
But it'd be interesting to see also with the ads you're talking, we're we're making three hundred, what'd you say, three ninety-eight?
Three, three ninety-three seventy-five.
Three ninety-three seventy-five.
A year or a month?
For three more buses, we we could possibly lose that. You know, is it, does it really cost that much to advertise on the radio? I'm in favor of it. That's not what I'm saying. I just, it it just seems a little uh like there could be more here, but.
Can I make comment?
Go ahead.
I I again, see what what you're saying, because again, it has been a concern of ours and we will find out more on that. But I think if we wanted to take it to that level where we want to try to get more compensation out of this and we're going to have to have an employee be the one that go out, does the marketing, talks to the entities, you know, gets the contract signed and then we're the ones that have to go pay to get the the uh the buses wrapped and everything else. So, you know, we're opening up ourselves up for a whole lot of, a whole lot more work when it comes to.
I'm not looking to to make more money. That that wasn't my point at all, um but I'm also not looking at at losing revenue. I mean, I think there's a fine line there.
So so the three ninety-three, we'll 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 continue on as long as those ads as long as the entities that are paying for the ad continue to pay for the ads, we will, we will.
Correct, but moving forward, if we have three more entities, we're getting more buses. We're going to be losing that three ninety-eight per month or not, I, that I giving it up, I guess.
And I guess these ads are for this promotion. It's um, I guess in my mind, it's it's different. He's promoting Ogumaw County, he's promoting the transit and in turn, these people are running ads, but he's going to get the revenue.
Well, that's the cost.
I've got the sentence right.
Tim, hang on just a second. Oh, Tim, go ahead.
Talks about the the ads, the forty percent of advertising revenues sold prior to the commencement date of the contract, the next sentence, the licensee shall retain one hundred percent of all advertising revenue generated during three years of the contract. What they're saying is, once this contract is signed, moving forward, Commissioner Scott said it, hundred percent goes to them. And so when these drop off and I don't know if you have renewals on them or not, but when these current contracts drop off, that's it.
Handshake deal.
It's, it goes to the other, but I I, you know, that may not be what they intend, so I think it's.
Well, we're a couple of different things. You have a written contract with the ones that uh have something on the bus now.
We do not have.
No, it's a handshake deal, so.
No, 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 it's through Wade.
No, no, no. What I'm talking about, the ones existing right now. All right, all right. So if somebody wants to pay more, he'll, he'll take their, their ones off and put his on and he'll get a hundred percent.
Well, and my interpretation of that was that.
You got a handshake deal.
Hey, hold on, let us talk.
But the list of people that he has signed up for this promotion, those are the only ones that he's going to get the hundred percent from. If he runs other advertising for someone else, we would get the forty percent of that. So so that contract would need to be clarified.
So we'll get more clarification on it. Definitely, definitely. We need further clarification. Let's hold Commissioner Scott, hold on.
We ever put an ad in the paper just saying, hey, is anybody interested in putting an ad on the bus?
So so here's another thing.
No.
If we spend any money towards advertising.
How much is it? I'll I'll write the check.
Scott, hold on, let him finish.
He's going to come up with an excuse why he can't do it.
M dot will not reimburse us their percentage if we spend any money on the advertising. The advertising has to be free to us. No.
I know, pay for your ad myself.
Commissioner Scott.
Um what what is the term?
Forget it. I'll I'll stop. You don't want to do anything new.
Let's move on. Thank you, Ray. There's going to be more. Hold on, guys. We're going to move on. We need further clarification. Enough is enough. Transfer it, transition plan.
Um what's the fair schedule ahead of that?
Revised fair schedule. I apologize, yes.
So what you've got on the, on the iPad is um based on our conversation here at our last uh discussion about this, um just taking the pricing off from the map itself and created the tables that would actually go on the back of the map, which for you is on the second page. And I picked out, I've obviously shown the zones, but you know, Lupton, Prescott, Rose City, Skidway Lake and West Branch are all called out. And just like you say on the state transportation maps, if I want to go from Prescott to West Branch, you just use the, go down Pine Prescott, go over to West Branch and I get my fee. Um we can add more locations uh if we want to. I mean, this can be very uh very fluid, so I don't know. Maybe you want to put Ogumaw Lake on there or something. I don't, it it I picked the towns and areas that we knew uh that were on the map already on the county map. Um in rethinking this, the one that's about the the child rates, the sixteen and under, you know, they're all a dollar. So we don't really need a table for that. We can just put all children under sixteen right for a dollar and and so that would eliminate one of these. And of course, you got the senior and disabled rates on there too. But it's important, you know, to accompany the map, so if you're not in one of those towns, you can at least see, okay, I'm in the blue area. I want to go to that Rose City. You get an idea of what um what your fee is going to be. Uh I think um trying to put the pricing between the different zones on the map itself, it just becomes way too busy and it just, I don't know how you could
I like this.
Somebody could, you know, pick it up and make sense, but at least I can see the map. If I'm more a visual person, I get what I'm doing. But the table, I think, certainly helps drive home, you know, from my location, you know, to another location.
So um I I didn't clarify this fair rate um on this map thoroughly enough. I I I just assumed that everyone would understand that. If you're in Rose City and you want to go somewhere within six or seven miles of Rose City, you won't be paying a dollar fifty or three dollars. You'll be paying seventy-five cents or a dollar fifty, just like it is in West Branch. Would be the same for Skidway Lake. But Prescott and South Branch, it would be a dollar or two dollars for six or seven miles from from Skidway or from Prescott or South Branch. Lupton is within six miles of Rose City, so if you wanted to to transportation from Lupton to Rose City would be seventy-five cents or a dollar fifty. So all of these prices that I put on this map are from these locations to West Branch because that is ninety percent of the transportation we do. It's from outlying areas to West Branch.
Go ahead, Tim.
I was going to say, the the numbers that Ray just said, that's that's tracks with the
Pardon me?
That they they track with the tables, so you said uh, yeah, so Lupton, right, it's the senior one, it's that last table down there. That's where you see the seventy-five cents. Yeah, I think that that's reflected in the tables.
And I, and I have talked to um the people that supply our software and they said, yes, that that would be easily um put into the system.
Did your drivers have an opportunity to look at this and to give input on this?
Been discussed with them, the ones that asked questions. We didn't have, hold a meeting on it or anything, but they're all for it because the someone will ask how much it's going to cost to go here or there. They can't even guess, you know, they don't, they're not, not going to add up nickels in their head or dimes in their head. And they just say, call dispatch.
Right, just seeing if this is is simplified enough for them. I mean, for for everybody, riders and drivers.
It's just going to simplify everything.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Simmons?
Uh no, I like a table like this and this is the kind of table I was talking about, like they have in maps and it makes it really simple. It's pretty simple.
Commissioner, right here. Commissioner Milcey?
Um I don't have a comment on this, but I have a comment in general for the transit.
Go ahead.
Um first off, I really don't appreciate the way Commissioner Scott, I feel attacked, Ray, which also is attacked on us as a transit committee. I know it's really easy for us to go back, oh, that's the way we used to always do it. But Commissioner Scott, I think you're seeing that we are working very hard with many different entities of this county to make sure that that isn't the continued case. And I really didn't appreciate what you did with Ray.
I apologize.
Okay, we're moving. Okay, we're moving forward. So please move forward with where we're at now. Please. Commissioner Scott?
We all are.
Do you have?
I, I understand, I understand what, what, um, where you were coming from. And I just wanted to state that the state of Michigan will not reimburse us if we spend money on it. So if we, if we choose somebody in Standish to, or wherever it was. To put the wraps on, we've got to, we've got to get the advertising ourselves. That will be an expense and basically it'll end up costing us money.
Commissioner Scott, go ahead. Anything with these fairs? Um, is there a, I guess on these fairs, uh, is there, are, are you guys thinking of revisiting this? Are, are these going to be standardized for a period of time?
Can I add that?
Sure.
Yeah. So the Transit Committee definitely wants to revisit this. We'd like to get this started. But it'll go for a period of time and it'll be a monthly conversation. And we'll also get, you know, input from the drivers, um, but we'll, we'll keep a real close contact on, on the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Okay.
Transition, transition plan. Did you have something there?
Don't go too far.
Yes, we're not, we're not tied.
Um, I can take the lead, uh, Commissioner Wolsey and Simmons, if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
So, um, this actually transitions into the next item too, on the job descriptions, the Transit Committee meeting. Uh, and Ray, if I misspeak, please jump in, but Ray informed us that he would like to reduce his hours at the transit. Uh, not necessarily retire outright, but reduce his hours, which, um, provides an opportunity for some uh, mentoring, if you will, for a new director coming on board. Uh, so what, uh, and the transition plan, uh, and before we even get into job descriptions, uh, the way I wrote this down at the committee meeting was we would probably be looking at ninety day period between posting the position, screening candidates, doing interviews and making offers. And then after that, there'd be a ninety day period where, uh, the new individual will be on maybe a probationary period. Uh, working directly with Ray still full time, uh, during that transition, just to make sure all of the, the, you know, uh, details of our, our operation are, are known now to our new person. And then after that, and I just targeted October one, just as a date to throw on there. Uh, Ray would then transition to a part-time assistant director. In part-time meaning probably something like twenty hours or less per week. So it would still be available, still be, uh, able to do, uh, some of like the filings for the state and so on to, to help, uh, the, the new director moving forward. So the next item on the agenda, you see job descriptions that you've seen before. And there were a couple of modifications that were made at the request of this board about monitoring millages and making sure, uh, uh, everything is filed timely. It did add on the last page, took a stab at, uh, pay scales for the two positions based on the current structure of the county. Now, our current transit director earns forty-four thousand, six eighty per year. Uh, you can see that the entry level for a new director is actually higher than that. And what we're trying to do here is be competitive within the market. Uh, in terms of getting our new director, but at the same time, keeping a pay scale that is consistent with what we have within our organization. Uh, so those are the factors that went into it. And then you can see the hourly rate for the assistant director there as well. Uh, five-year, uh, uh, scale, because that's what we've done with all of our Atwell employees, uh, that we've had come forward. We had an administrative secretary. We did the, uh, uh, I think the other position that we did, I think it was over at, um, Veterans. Uh, where we did this. So it's just attempting to be consistent with what we've already set. Now, this is again, based on where we are as an organization, as Ogumaw County, obviously up for discussion with the board. Uh, if you think the rates are too high or too low, whatever, there's nothing cast in stone. You don't have to adopt that scale. But if we're going to advertise for a position, we are going to have to have, sort of mention it about the, uh, in order to attract candidates. That's, that's really the two items. So we've got the transition plan and, uh, really upper discussion with the board now as to whether or not you would agree to do that. And then the next step would be to look at those job descriptions and, you know, are, are you satisfied with them?
Ray, did you see this proposed pay scale?
No.
No, he, he didn't. I mean, I just was able to pull that together. Ray, if I come over here, I can show you if you're.
So he didn't have any input on this?
Uh, other than, uh, to say that it had to be higher than what he's earning right now. So this, the director, now we said some salary positions would be annual and then, uh, assistant.
So.
Go ahead, Ray.
I would be classified as assistant director.
Right. So when you transitioned, uh, to that, that part-time role, yes, but you've also got the.
The, the year. Yep.
How, how, uh, I guess I'm not sure of my verbiage here of what to say here, but you, you've been a huge asset, uh, to the transit and, and to see that current transit director rates and see a new transit director entry level coming in. Um, more money after all of yours, yours has to be a little frustrating. Um.
Not really. I mean, four or five years ago, I was told by a different board that, um, wages were frozen, you know, and nobody was going to make any more money and whatever. And then COVID hit and it's just, just been a, a transition since then to, to get the transit back up to where it was pre-COVID. Um, COVID, uh, really affected me. I, I hate to keep saying it, but it really did. It it hit me hard. Um, I'm pretty much recovered from it. And I just want to move on and I, it, it doesn't matter to me how much the new director makes. I, I realize that it, it's worth every penny. I should have had someone helping me three years ago. And, and I, and it was mentioned at times, but it just didn't go, get any further than that. And I just kept on chugging away. So.
You did. And, and I guess I'm, I'm saying it's appreciated. Um, and, and hopefully the board now that you have has been an asset to you.
Um, they have.
So.
Yes, yeah.
Did you have something, Commissioner Simmons?
No, I just think it, um, would, would, is a good way to go because then when you have a new director, you also have if, if piece of vacation or whatever, the assistant knows it thoroughly.
This transition can happen more smoothly as well.
Exactly.
And I guess I will be an in-between, between the employees and the new director and.
Right.
Yeah. Along with all of the other stuff that I will continue to do, that I don't think a new director is going to want to do. Um, like counting money. It's dirty. It is just nasty, dirty, all those pennies and nickels and dimes and nobody wants to do it. But I've done it so long, it's just second nature to me. So I would help out any way I could.
I'm sure.
A- as I transition away.
Yep.
And maybe at some point I become a part-time employee of the transit at fifteen, eighteen hours a week and wash buses and mow the lawn and just something to keep me busy and keep my foot in it. So.
Good. Commissioner right here, do you have anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Scott?
Nope.
Commissioner Wolsey. Thank you, Ray.
Now can I go?
Yes. Item C, Position Allocation Amendment.
Okay, um, just to clarify, do we want the job description on Thursday?
Yes. I guess I believe so.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. The, um, revision to the position allocation list that you see just, um, uh, reiterates conversations that you've had here for a couple of months now concerning that open sergeant position. Um, because there was no desire to, to do that. We do have a corrections officer though, that's still sitting, uh, still working without them actually being listed on the position allocation list. So what this would do is just eliminate that open sergeant position and maintain the correction officer position. And, you know, this is important to do because you do say in the appropriations resolution that you first have the ability to do this at any point during the year. But clearly, clearly a decision was made, uh, without passing anything to not promote that. So this just simply reflects what your intentions are. Uh, unless you tell me differently, but, um, it's absolutely sets, sets the record for what the intended staff level is.
Commissioner Simmons?
So, Smith?
Simmons.
Oh, sorry. You're messing with us. Okay. So, uh, the four sergeants are, that are there now. One's, one's like the E-six sergeant, the other three are the E-five sergeants. The other ones, one's staff sergeant, the other ones are just sergeants.
Well, it's an interesting quandary. We don't have a position called staff sergeant. We don't even have that in the contract. Uh, and that's something that, um, will likely be discussed a little bit later this year. So what we would have is the jail lieutenant, uh, and commander, and then you would have four sergeants.
Yep.
And then everyone else has that corrections officer designation.
Yep, okay.
We're just closing in with this. We're just closing the last piece of the puzzle.
Right.
Okay, agreed. You guys all okay with this?
Well, what they've told us, what they've told us is there's a sergeant for every shift, but that, that isn't the title either. So wouldn't even, we wouldn't even know if he had all four on one shift or not. I would, I would just ask if you go to the corrections or go to the sheriff and ask if, if he wants two of these positions. Slash cook. Because that was such a big thing about the cooks being corrections officers. If one does resign or something, I would imagine they're going to come back and want a, a cook.
Well, they have corrections officers as secretary. So I see your point. So.
Secretary.
I see what you're saying.
Talk about that at law enforcement. That'd be, I think, come, uh, accomplish.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good.
Perfect.
Idea.
First quarter budget adjustments.
Okay, um, they put together a summary sheet. And, um, because the meeting has gone so long, I hadn't intended to hit every one of these lines. I won't do that to you. But there are a couple of things I do want to draw your attention to, and then I'll put it all in a nice nicely wrapped resolution for the rest. First one, it's the second line, the local community stabilization. Uh, revenue that came in, and this has been a frustrating one for the last three years. Uh, the amendment that I put in forward would actually increase that revenue by a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, because we've received, uh, we budgeted fifty thousand for the revenue, we've received over a hundred eighty thousand already this year. Last year, we only took in a hundred thousand, four hundred seventy-three for the full year. So prior to that, in twenty-two, uh, it was over three hundred thousand that had come in. So this has definitely been a, a very fluid, uh, amount, and I've yet to figure out the formula of the states using. It's, it's good this year, certainly. And I even checked, I wanted to make sure that we didn't, uh, have a payment that came in that was supposed to be for last year, and it's not. It's, it definitely tracks, um, with an October payment each year. So I'm pretty confident that that's not the case. Then I'd love to see, well, did somebody mistake this for revenue sharing? No, revenue sharing is there too. So it's just a, it, it fortunately on the positive end for us. But will definitely, uh, make a big difference in terms of our, our budget at the end of the year. So these other adjustments in here are relatively small by comparison. The overall uh, revenue, uh, and this adjustment would increase by a hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred ten dollars, eighty cents. On the expenditure side, there are a lot of notes in here you'll see for follow-up with department head. For instance, I'm going to look right at remonumentation. I think Randy said that there was some adjustment to the grant that we received. I sure hope so, because the expenditures are over budget right now. This is something a department head is supposed to be on top of and make, uh, or fill out the budget, uh, forms that we have, and we make those adjustments. Um, it, this is, there, you'll see that reference a few times in here and following up department heads. These are the lines that they're directly responsible for. A few of these, um, have deferred action on, for instance, with the, uh, workers comp insurance. That's fluctuates throughout the year, uh, in terms of payments and what we've already budgeted per department, uh, for workers count. Uh, it looks like it's about a hundred eighty dollars deficit right now, but in a couple of weeks, it might look like there's two thousand dollars unspent in it. So that, that one will fluctuate. And when we get toward the end of the year, we'll come up with the final number for that. Uh, overall, oh, a couple of other, uh, big adjustments, um, particularly like the clerk's office, where two new employees have been hired since the start of the budget year. And they took, uh, in lieu payments instead of health insurance. So that significantly reduces the expenditure for the clerk's office. Uh, and so you'll see that, you'll see the reduction in the health insurance and then the increase in the insurance buyout in there. The rest of these adjustments are a lot along those lines. The total impact on the expenditures for the general fund is actually a reduction of twenty-three thousand, two hundred ten dollars and six cents. So both revenue and expenses is actually kind of going in the right direction for us, uh, in terms of making sure that we're stable. The next, uh, group that you'll see, uh, uh, for the, uh, special funds, those are their, those self-contained funds. A lot of these have to do with interest income and bank charges, which will defer that action on again until the end of the year. Depending on how much money is in those different funds, that, that number will go up or down. Uh, big one though here to point out is the medical marijuana grant, uh, the revenue and expenditure. I need to follow up on the, well, on the, um, uh, grant itself with the revenue. There was also a revenue that came in that was like an administrative revenue that came back to the county that I want to see if I can clean up, uh, before you see the actual resolution. It was just for a couple of thousand dollars. The balance of this, you can see the, uh, if you want to track with the pages. You've got the budget report. I highlighted those lines so that you can go right to them. And you'll see particularly when we get to the end, a lot of those, but like the bank charges, in many cases it's under ten dollars. So it's just not something that we're going to spend a lot of time on right now, uh, until we get, again, later in the year. So that's the nutshell. Um, that can go longer if you like, but we're vastly approaching eleven o'clock and you've been very patient today.
I know. I, I appreciate this. It does look like we're headed in the right direction. Uh, small steps are better than no steps at all. Any, any comments? I, I, I appreciate the condensed version. We have time to look at it on our own and, and, and reach out if we have further questions. Do you guys have any comments, questions?
So when will we vote on this? If you've got a follow-up with all these department heads?
Those follow-ups won't take long. The department heads can make the adjustments administratively. They don't need additional board approval to do that, to move between the lines that are non-personnel lines within their activity. Um, so that's something that we have to take care of. The other couple of things I need to follow up on are literally probably getting ahold of Tracy and asking a question. All right. I'll have that taken care of.
Well, I think, uh, one of the things that we can probably remove is this part-time corrections officers. If, if the union isn't going to let us use them. We got like thirty thousand dollars put toward that.
I mean, I would say not yet. Let's not do that yet.
Okay. I wouldn't take the, everything out of it, but maybe send a signal.
Anything, Commissioner Wolsey?
No, I'm good there. No.
Overtime you summary.
So this is the, the monthly report, January concluded. So, um, the first page you see just the impact in the budget itself, where we've have overtime budgeted. Uh, but I want to draw your attention to the graphs, uh, where I have, uh, actually included now. And you see the asterisk on fiscal year twenty-four included the comp time that is billed for the months. And I did go back and update October, November, December as well. First place you really see it is the West Branch, Rose City School Resource Officer. You see a red line that's, uh, way above all the previous years. And again, this is the impact of, uh, now having those, uh, comp time hours on the, on the books. And you see the same thing with the, uh, Whitmore Prescott. Uh, School Resource Officer. You go down to the corrections and, and this is the one that, um, is now of concern. Uh, they're not over budget anywhere, but when we factor in what's been heard now in compensatory time, we see that red line now, uh, approaching higher than what we were in twenty-three. And, and this, I think, gets right to the point that, uh, it was discussed at the last meeting, that there is a cost to that. It's going to get spread someplace else and maybe, uh, uh, somebody has to work overtime, maybe on to cover a shift, or somebody's taking a vacation or is off without having to use PTO, but there is a cost. And now you can see that. And it is, uh, also interesting that it's tracking with the trends of previous years in terms of the highs and the lows, um, you know, by month. Uh, the next one, the road patrol overtime, uh, that one is now the high line. Uh, the, the highest, uh, expenditure line, uh, factoring in the comp time. And then secondary road patrol, that's one person. So that's maybe, uh, bit of an outlier, but, but you can definitely see the impact. Uh, the other, uh, uh, table that I just glossed over, that's the overtime and comp time earned by employee, uh, in by departments. So that you can still, uh, track it, uh, that way if you'd like. So that's the brief explanation. So that you can still uh track it uh that way if you'd like. So that's the brief explanation of it. We'll continue to report this out the first committee, the whole meeting of the month. And that's so you can see it.
So by looking at this, like the first percentage overtime use summary, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the actual, the percentages. Used look better than previous years, but then when you look at the scales that you have out.
Right.
A- and you've included the comp time, it's it's actually significantly not.
Yes.
Am I understanding this badly?
That's exactly the point, um because it is money or it is expenditure that we're on the hook for. I mean, it's it's there, it's real. It just in terms of reporting it, if somebody takes a comp hour off, you don't see that. You don't see. Where it was earned or, you know, how it was taken off. You might see somebody having to backfill a shift. You might see uh, you know, just. PTO banks not going down. Uh one item that was um added to the. Uh by employee scale was the second one. The far right. I've now included the compensatory time bank, so you can see what's banked in some of these. Uh in the uh. Just for uh corrections, for instance, there's two hundred forty-four hours banked. That's got a value of eight thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars that has not been used. It's sitting in a bank right now. It's gonna get used. So it's going in now on these graphs, so you can actually see, okay, there was an expense that was earned here and this is, this is what we're obligated.
It's pretty alarming.
Well, then to go to your point with percentages, you can't go over really by percentages without first looking at the first column. Like like just take the first thing, pure soft is overtime.
Mm-hmm.
FY twenty twenty-one, actual spent was twenty-four thousand dollars, fifty-five percent.
Used.
Okay, yeah, year to date. In in that period of time was thirteen thousand dollars. It was only fifty-five percent.
Right.
In this year, if we use thirteen thousand now, it would be over a hundred percent. Because the.
Their budgets.
Because what's budgeted is less now.
Right, so that's not an actual, I I see.
Well, you just gotta, you gotta compare.
Can can you go over that one more?
I I understand what you're saying.
Well, look at that first line.
The budget from the years.
Twenty-one in the in the in the uh right-hand side.
Right.
Actual paid out was twenty-four thousand for the year. We've only budgeted twelve thousand.
The budget is has changed from fiscal year to fiscal year, the amount. And that doesn't show that.
It doesn't show the budgeted.
Right.
Year over year, but it does show the actual.
Okay.
Like in twenty twenty-two, we we spent thirty-eight thousand.
Right.
And so thirty-five thousand of that, thirty-five percent of that is more than we're we're budgeted for the whole year now.
That's a good point. It is. I I I like the graphs. To me, them are pretty simple and and that was pretty alarming, seeing that significant jump in. In that red line um.
So it's, I think, uh the what you would see if you saw the budgeted amounts for each year, that they spend right to the budget. They just spend, they spend right to the budget. It's whatever we budgeted at, if we put overtime at fifty thousand, they'll spend fifty thousand.
Right.
We put it at twenty, they'll spend twenty.
Right. Uh thank you for that.
This is the comp time argument because comp time is paid back out in regular time, okay? So they build up, they build up overtime, put it in a comp bank, take a week off. We would normally pay them that week anyway. But comp time pays that week. Obviously, the bottom line is that person is not working. We still spent the same amount of money um per that budget line, but the deal is that person wasn't working. That comes to an officer on the street. That means. And then my thing was, and because they feel that there's a a minimum they have to staff. They bring overtime in to cover the comp time guy. The comp time gets week off. The budget doesn't hit, get an effect because it's regular time and he would have been there. Thing is, when they bring in an overtime officer, now we're paying overtime. Plus that week that they got off on comp time, it's not paid time off. They still got vacation time coming too.
Right.
And you can take this comp time every month. Every month you can take this and all it takes, all it takes for a week off. It doesn't take, it doesn't take forty hours of comp time to get forty hours pay paid time off or.
Ends up to sixty hours.
Yeah, it's like thirty hours. You take, you take thirty hours, you get forty-five hours of comp. Thirty hours of overtime gives you forty-five hours of comp.
Now, is that is that something that can be negotiated in? Is that, it is, okay.
Yeah.
So there'd be more to come on that, I'm sure, now that now that there's light to it.
I'd like to make a comment and I know you did as well. These graphs, this is this is good stuff. Hope we can see this. Very good.
I was, I was kind of surprised at the nurse when she said that Christmas time was the low time for jails. She said that.
Yes.
But at our jail, we pay more overtime in December.
Public public comment, any? Any public cap, any public comment on the phone?
Be scared everybody away.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at ten fifty-five.
No, we pregnant.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.
Good day, everyone.
We're done.